Good afternoon. This is a City Commission work session for the City of Largo for Tuesday, December 8, 2020. You can probably tell that because we're all wearing masks. I'm going to call this meeting to order. We usually start with a business spotlight. Our business spotlight is not here, so we may readdress that later if they get here in the near future. So we're going to start with item number two, introduction of our new IT director.
Yes, I'm pleased to introduce to you today our new IT director, Dan Penning. I thought this would be an opportunity for you to take a few minutes to meet him and he can talk to you a little bit about his background and his excitement for being part of the City of Largo team. And I'm sure you'll see him many times in the upcoming months, coming to you asking for money to spend on all the projects that we have planned through IT as we upgrade our technology, both for the benefit of our employees and for the community. Is that Dan?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to meet everyone. I've heard a lot about everyone and I really am proud to work for the City of Largo. It's truly a unique place. A little bit of history about myself. I come from the private industry, specifically healthcare. I've been an IT director for all sorts of healthcare organizations, most recently Freedom and Optimum Health, which is a Medicare Advantage plan headquartered in Hillsborough County, where I managed two data centers with about 150,000 end users throughout the state of Florida and South Carolina. So more specifically with what Largo is going to be doing in the near future is our Microsoft Migration Project and Workday Projects, as I'm sure you guys are aware. Between those two projects, we're essentially changing everything that city staff do when interacting with IT. So to say, to Second Henry's point about all of the upgrades that are coming forward, it's really, we're changing every way that people interact with the city through IT. So I'm excited to be a part of that. I have migrated four different Office 365 migrations in the past, tens of thousands of users. So I'm looking forward to our migration. It's going to be around 1,000 users. So we will be very successful in it. It's going to be the first phase in February 1st is our email phase, and that will go live at that time. And then we'll work forward through the additional phases throughout the next year. So my goals for the IT department are to establish a high-performing IT department in alliance with our HPO initiatives and to bring industry best practices to IT specifically around security and compliance, architecture, service desk management, and IT business processes. So that's all I had. If you guys have any questions for me.
Any questions?
I look forward to working with you.
Likewise.
Yeah, we're glad you're here.
Yeah, welcome aboard. What changes would you like to do, like building on the work environment IT?
Something that I think is very important, and 2020 kind of brought it to the forefront, is to enable people to work from wherever they are with whatever device they have. So something that is applicable to this is Microsoft Teams. We're going to be implementing Microsoft Teams in the near future. This allows staff to collaborate over video, screen sharing, audio, on the same files at the same time, no matter where in the world they are working at that time. So I think that's going to be very important, that we can foster that collaboration with staff even when they're not able to be physically close to each other.
How are you going to look at across departments also?
So cross-department-wise, we're actually, Teams is again, a great feature with this. We actually just had a TGC, which is Technology Governance Committee meeting, specifically talking about webinar replacements, how we're going to make sure that staff are able to access the data that they need when they need it. And Teams is a good option for that.
Thank you.
Dan, speaking of data, with data management, have you given any consideration to centralizing data so it's accessible to everybody, database creation, management, not just internally but externally?
Yes, so one of the options with Office 365, or M365 as it's been rebranded, is compliance and compliance and records management. So one of the features that we purchased allows us to classify data depending on its record management policy that applies to that data. So we'd be able to respond to retention requests or to further reporting requests in a much faster manner and be capable with less staff work.
Centralize it so data wouldn't be siloed. It's accessible to the proper commissioner.
Yes, exactly. So the different features inside of the M365 suite, OneDrive, Airform, and Microsoft Teams, we expect a vast majority of all some to be available inside of one of our existing enterprise apps. So in fact, we can perform some applications like that.
I just wanted to say welcome as well. And I ask you, outside of the migration to new platforms, what do you think is going to be the biggest challenge for IT in the next couple of years?
The biggest challenge is really the changing industry and changing demands that are going to be placed on the city as a whole and that IT are going to be expected to meet. So one example would be, we're migrating from thin clients to endpoints, where every staff member that today uses a thin client will have their own laptop or desktop that actually will greatly increase their ability and productivity that they're able to do, but at the same time, it does increase the workload for IT to manage those endpoints. It's also going to be extremely important as we introduce those endpoints to maintain the level of security that we have today. So that's why we're, as we roll out Office 365, we're deploying what's called Microsoft MFA, multi-factor authentication, which requires people to do security codes or push notifications, fingerprint-based things, things like that, to ensure that we have a high level of data integrity with the city data.
With the growing climate of cybersecurity, what challenges do you see and what will you like to change in your department that you started to see?
I really see challenges of data governance and data integrity being paramount. When I say that, I think ransomware, for example. The city has a responsibility to make sure, specifically the IT department has a responsibility to make sure that the data that the city needs to function is available when needed and it is accurate. So when I talk about MFA with that multi-factor, that's one part of it. Another part is we're going to utilize artificial intelligence as part of the Microsoft Azure platform to evaluate all of those authentication attempts. And then that AI can evaluate whether that attempt is graded as high risk, medium risk, or low risk, and then act accordingly. So for example, if it's an impossible travel situation, where if I logged into my email in Largo today, and then five minutes later I'm logging in from California, the artificial intelligence will flag that and not allow that second login.
What are you going to have an open-door policy towards other cities, their IT departments to learn and build on those that we can, Pinellas Park does some, I know that they're starting to get their employees, their IT department, I work over there also, so what, will you have an open-door policy with other cities and their IT departments to learn from them?
Absolutely. We've actually already learned from other governmental agencies in Florida as we set up our M365 environment. MFA is one example that we've done that. We reached out through our IT organization, which is called Flagisa, and many organizations throughout Florida are a member of that. So we spoke about, to them about how different enrollment options can be presented to staff to make it as easy as possible for them during the transition. So we've had some good information from other agencies already.
So first of all, welcome to the city. Extremely happy that you're here. And I know that when the transition finally happens to office, it's going to be extremely much better for everybody who works here. My real job, I've worked remotely, so I use all of those, you know, Microsoft, I use, we have MFA for everything that we do. And so I'm extremely happy to see all that coming. So I think one of the biggest complaints that most people have right now with our open-source technology that we use is the email. How big of a challenge do you believe it's going to be to train and change that over to Microsoft? And do you see any issues where anything might get lost, or, you know, what do you think that looks like?
So traditionally, email migrations suffer most with the amount of data that's being moved, because email can be thousands to millions of email messages and attachments and calendar invites, things like that. For better or worse, the city has actually had a very low email quota over the past.
Yeah.
So that actually makes our migration much more simple. And the amount of data-
Is anybody in here under quota right now?
Exclusively delete all, huh?
Don't worry about what I do.
We're certainly excited to have you. As you well know, IT is becoming increasingly important in the function of a city like ours. And it's very, very important for providing the exemplary services to our residents and businesses. And we look forward to the improvements across Florida.
Dan and his staff will be very much part of the team for the design of the new city hall. Because that's a wonderful opportunity to do a lot of new technology with a blank slate in the building.
Mayor, I was going to, just playing off what Commissioner Smith was talking about, networking with your peers and counterparts, you know. We have a very strong working relationship with the Florida League of Cities. Commissioner Robinson is on the Board of Directors there, so when it's time, I mean, to get dialed in with their IT staff up there, because they help us celebrate our successes. I mean, we've done things with sustainability and community development and other things that we've shared with other cities, communities around the state. So as you get your feet, you know, underneath you and you think it's appropriate, probably get them dialed in with IT up there in Tallahassee. And I think we like to be on the cutting edge, the leading edge of most things here. So I invite you to seize that opportunity.
I think that's great.
I'd like to ask kind of weird question, but what's been your favorite book you've ever read?
Favorite book, I'd actually start with Why by Simon Sinek. I just assign that to all of my managers in the department. It really helps focus people on why are we doing things and what is the purpose of it? One example I like to give is Largo was not founded with an IT department, and it has one today. So what changed? And it really helps us align IT with what is the organization's needs, and it drives our decision-making going forward.
I think it. What was that again?
Start with Why by Simon Sinek.
Thank you.
Are there any other applicants coming up?
Sounds like a job interview, doesn't it?
I thought he already had it.
He's having flashbacks to the process he went through.
Must sound like the interview.
Welcome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Have you given any consideration or have you looked at anything as far as CRM for the city?
Yes, it's actually one of the things that is going to be evaluated in the next one to two years. It's a large project that really needs to be done well because it touches so many different departments in the city. IT is, that's actually an interesting software for IT, because we will both be the implementing department, but also one of the primary users of that software as well.
Eric, can you, maybe everybody doesn't know what CRM is, can you explain?
Well, I don't get to use an acronym that nobody knows? So CRM, Customer Relationship Management. You know, it's universal in business. We're staying in touch, keeping notes on clients and such, or reaching out, very heavily involved, not just in sales, but, you know, throughout organizations. So I sent an email to Henry, you know, and Henry would log that, you know, Eric reached out with another silly request, and here's what it is, and then we would know, so you can keep a history on connections.
It's a good way to track, sorry, I didn't-
Yeah, Dan could probably explain it a lot better than, why am I doing this here? You know, you're the IT genius.
One really good example is IT could track the tickets and requests that come from individual staff members or departments and trend those over time. That way we can make sure that we're going to be able to meet future needs and forecast to meet.
And also from citizens, you know, from residents. They call into the city, call into a department, department logs it, now you have a history of all the contact and the solutions that were offered. You also keep track of, you know, alarms for to get back to somebody, so you're always staying on your calendar.
And that is being evaluated right now. It's between the Microsoft project and Workday. It was the third priority, but it is a very high priority.
Throw that on your table too.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dan.
Nice to meet you, Dan.
Brandon texted, he thinks the interference might be coming from someone's cell phones, if everyone could check.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. This afternoon, we have a presentation by Whit Blanton, the Executive Director of Forward Pinellas. He had requested an opportunity to present to you the Forward Pinellas's Legislative Priorities and Earmarks for the 2021 Legislative Session. I did want to share with the Commission that I have been serving, or actually attending their meetings of their Legislative Committee since 2018, and have found that they have very fruitful and good discussions, and our participation at those meetings has helped to inform the city's state legislative action agenda. So without further ado, I will introduce Whit Blanton. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. Good to see you, Eric. Good to be here today.
Hey, Rick.
Well, normally I try to get around about once a year to all the local governments, and I think I'm about on track again for the City of Largo, so appreciate the opportunity to be here. And Commissioner Smith, I might need to make a request of you to serve on one of our committees, because we have such a high turnover of our board this year. We have five new members out of the 13, so going to be some changes ahead. I could say something about West Bay Drive, but that's not my idea. I do have some ideas.
Fish him out, come on.
No, no, no. I tried that and I got into some trouble in Bel Air, though. You may remember.
Yes, I do.
Are you? Good. We appreciate that.
There we have it.
Okay. And can I advance with the keyboard? Yeah, there we go. Okay, good. All right, well, thank you. I'll be fairly brief today. Just wanted to talk a little bit about some of the legislative issues that we're facing in the year ahead, and we've just found out some new ones, and I'll go over those in a moment. But first, you know, the role of Forward Pinellas as your metropolitan planning organization, one of our key things to do is to bring federal and state dollars into Pinellas County and into the communities for needy projects, on the transportation side especially. This year, for the first time ever, we did a joint call for projects, where we had our three main grant funding programs, our Transportation Alternatives, our Multimodal Priorities List, and our Complete Streets Program. We had one call for projects in the summer. We had a staggered due date, so that we didn't overwhelm those local governments that wanted to submit on multiple. And we will be bringing those recommendations to the board in March. We received a number of applications, generally about six to eight is about how many we receive for all those different programs, because we do try to scrutinize them and make sure that they're really, truly good projects. So we will bring that to the board in March, and then we'll start that cycle over again. Each year, it's a new opportunity. So just real briefly, last year, we adopted our Long Range Transportation Plan, known as Advantage Pinellas, and it is a framework for guiding growth to the right areas and redevelopment in the right areas and preserving other areas, and then supporting that growth and redevelopment with transportation investments. And we've really been focusing on three principal areas, improving traffic flow and managing congestion, enhancing transit service, and then connecting our Safer Streets Network. And we are in the midst of a Safe Streets Pinellas Initiative, which is really looking at reducing our deaths and serious injuries on our roadways. All of that, though, is framed around our countywide land use plan, which is really something that's unique in Florida. There's no other county that has that same sort of structure, where the MPO is also a land use planning agency, and there's actually statutory responsibilities of the local governments to be consistent with that countywide land use plan. The major project priority list is sort of our biggest project priority list. It's the basis for developing the Department of Transportation's five-year work program. We tend to have larger projects on this, so we have a minimum project size of about $350,000, which is a pretty small transportation project. But we also have a couple of $100 million projects on this list. And we limit it to three applications per city. All modes are considered, unlike maybe where we were five or six years ago. And it's evaluated against criteria that were adopted in the Advantage Pinellas Long Range Plan. And those are broadly safety, mobility, economic growth, equitable outcomes, protecting the environment, and increasing resilience. And we have a pretty long list of criteria, so that's why we try to select the best projects. The next one is a Transportation Alternatives Program. These are federal funds that come direct to the MPO. These, the eligible projects here are bicycle, pedestrian, and other non-auto projects. It doesn't include landscaping, it doesn't include utility relocation, so it's pretty limited. The prerequisites are that there be a local commitment, we're not going to force anything on you, and that you have the right-of-way or easement acquired already. And then the last one is the trickiest, and I believe Largo is local agency plan certified, at least for some projects.
Yes, they are.
But a lot of our local governments aren't. And so we usually look to the county or to the Department of Transportation to provide that support. But that is a requirement for these funds. The next program is our Complete Streets Program, and you're very familiar with that. Rosary Road was funded, and you've had some others in the queue. And we are, I'm really happy to see what you've done for Rosary, by the way. I went out and rode my bicycle on it, and it was fabulous. So this is really just a makeover of a street to conform it to your local land use objectives. So if you've got a redevelopment plan, or if you've got some sort of local community connectivity, this is the kind of project we want to look at, where we can right-size the street for the purpose. And we've had funding in two categories for the, almost five years we've had this program. A set aside for concept planning, which comes out of our planning dollars, and that money is immediately available, up to $100,000, but you have to use it within a year. And then the construction money, up to $1 million, that goes into the five-year work program that DOT develops, and it's the new fifth year. And that's important, because a lot of times there's some permitting and other requirements you have to get through, and that can take time. So it's good that that's the new fifth year. Similar criteria, just have the difference here is that there be a land use and redevelopment connection. So I'm going to transition a little bit from the funding to another aspect of funding. And this is the problem with earmarks, and some of you may have heard me talk about this. But earmarks are legislative requests that go directly into the budget and kind of bypass the normal priority rankings for projects. And with transportation, it's particularly troublesome, because earmarks don't grow the funding pie. They come out of the Transportation Trust Fund at the state level. And as much as the intent might be to take it out of general revenue or general fund, when it gets into the committee process, when it gets into the legislature, you kind of lose control of that. And so what we've seen over the last several years is that earmarks have begun to force other party projects out of the queue. And if the governor vetoes the earmark, that money is gone from the budget. It doesn't go back to where it once was, it's just reducing the budget. And then FDOT is prohibited from working on that project for the next fiscal year. So if you ask money for right-of-way or construction, but you're still in the design phase, DOT has to stop the design phase, if the governor vetoes it, at least for a year. So it can set you back. And earmarks can only include one phase of a project, and we've had a case where we got an earmark for design, but we really needed money for planning. And the City of Clearwater didn't like the design that was coming up, so that $1 million earmark ended up going away. So be real careful when you ask for earmarks. We had a goodwill earmark last year for the Tampa Bay Area Regional Transit Authority, and that, they didn't request it, a legislative member thought they needed the money, and that ended up coming out of some funding that PSTA was not ready to use immediately, but was going to use within a year or two for their downtown intermodal center in Clearwater. And another earmark in Hillsborough resulted in five safety projects being taken out of the budget. So we just want to be careful and steer clear from these if possible. We can help you, though. So one of those call for projects that outlined earlier, and we have other grant opportunities. Safe routes to schools is not one that we control, but we can work with you to get you in the queue if that's what you're looking for. And then the Highway Safety Improvement Program is a data-driven program that's got a lot of funding to address safety problems. But by data-driven, you have to have evidence that there are crashes or issues there. You can't just say people perceive that there'd be a safety problem. So we do ask that if you are thinking of a way to find new revenue, work with us and we can help you. We can identify some additional funding sources, or we can at least get it on the radar and then see what we can do. Because sometimes the Department of Transportation does find money when projects come in under budget, or underbid, or maybe get deferred and can't happen in the current fiscal year, and that frees up some money. So we do like to keep a ready list of things that you're looking to do, and it may not be a lot of money, but it may help you get started on some things. So our legislative priorities are not final yet, but we have developed a committee recommendation, and the board will hear them in January. And this has been based on a lot of input from League of Cities, from Association of Counties, from American Planning Association, and others. I'm going to go through these pretty quickly, but trust funds, flexible funding, and home rule are kind of the hallmarks of all this. Protecting trust funds, this is going to be a big one this year. Whenever we seem to get into some budget challenges, the legislature is required to have a balanced budget, and they tend to sweep funds from these programmed areas like the Sadowski Affordable Housing Fund, or the Transportation Trust Fund, and sweep that into general revenue. And if that's done this year, we're going to be in real trouble, because we've already seen some big budget cuts in the Tenanted Work Program. The next one is supporting flexible and sustained transportation funding. You may be aware that the gas tax is a declining revenue source because of fuel efficiency and electric vehicles. And the Transportation Trust Fund is made up of very focused transportation pots of money that can only be spent in certain ways, and frankly, it disadvantages a county like Pinellas that is very developed. So one of the big programs that the department has is the Strategic Intermodal System. We have three roadways on the Strategic Intermodal System, I-275, US-19, and the new Gateway Expressway. And that money can only be spent on those roadways, or potentially an airport. The other arter- We have three roadways on the Strategic Intermodal System: I-275, US-19, and the new Gateway Expressway. And that money can only be spent on those roadways, or potentially an airport. The other arterials program would be a great program. That's the other DOT arterials, like Olmerton and Gulf Boulevard and all the other state roads, but the money can only be used for capacity improvements, meaning adding a lane or adding a turn lane or building an interchange, and we're just not doing a lot of that in Pinellas. We do put a few turn lanes in, but we're not going to add any more capacity really to Olmerton Road. We've already kind of done that. So the problem we ran into with our 2045 Long Range Plan is when we did our revenue projections, we saw that we had about $400 million of other arterial money that was supposed to come to Pinellas County that we did not have projects for. And so that means that money, over time, will go to other counties in Florida, and we become a donor county. And if the Florida Department of Transportation just changed its rules a little bit to say, you know, adding capacity may mean moving more people along a corridor or through an intersection, not just cars, then we could use that money for bus rapid transit, express bus service. We could use it for safety, bicycle and pedestrian movement, a lot of things, which maybe fit the character of Pinellas County a little bit better. I won't go into too much detail on that. I've kind of covered that one pretty well. Supporting safety for all users of all transportation modes. We had a bill last year that threatened to remove the yellow rectangular rapid-flashing beacons around the county and force them to be turned red within a period of time. Those are governed by the Federal Highway Administration, and so probably couldn't have happened. And the bill would have actually removed those beacons and the crosswalk if you couldn't turn them red. So we do have other devices that you can put in instead, but we just think those are decisions that need to be local, not made by a legislator and applied to the whole state, so we're going to be mindful of that. And then similar to the role of the Metropolitan Planning Organization, every now and then, somebody gets the idea to merge the MPOs, or restructure the MPOs, or repurpose them, or change the laws, and they're established by the federal government. So we'd like to kind of keep that autonomy as much as possible. And then one that's near and dear to your heart, Commissioner Carroll, and others, and Vice Mayor Robinson, is Home Rule, a big part of the Suncoast League of Cities and others. And we see that in so many different ways, that Home Rule, and so we're right there with you in terms of our autonomy. Cheryl Reed brought this to our attention, is supporting state and federal assistance with addressing the impacts of COVID-19, with the CARES Act funding running out, and the length of time it takes to apply. We really think this needs to be renewed, and we're hopeful that Congress will do that. And then supporting state funding assistance with local resiliency planning. Speaker Sprouls has said that this is one of his priorities. He's looking at setting up a grant program, and we want to make sure that that's a good program that delivers what we need in a very vulnerable county. So I mentioned this rectangular rapid-flashing beacons. You have these 400 or so around the county. We have installed, in some other areas, another type of device called a pedestrian hybrid beacon. If you drive along Park Boulevard, you'll see those that have just been in place. And these yellow flashing beacons are really better suited for two-lane or slower-speed four-lane roads, where the speed is 35 miles an hour or less. Those hybrid beacons, which have the overhead red flashing, and then they turn solid red, they're better for your six-lane roads and 45 miles an hour or more, because they make you come to a complete stop, not just to stop for somebody who happens to be in front of you in the crosswalk. So you need a little more stopping distance. They were just installed on Bush Boulevard over in Tampa, and you might have seen a news story about that. So what we're looking for in 2021 is a desire to broaden the ability of local governments to use the discretionary sales tax, penny for Pinellas, for affordable housing. This is an issue that St. Petersburg has floated. They have a couple of potential sponsors, but those sponsors, Representative Latvalla and Senator Hooper, are wanting to see more of a countywide show of support for that before they endorse that. This will have statewide ramifications for any local government that has adopted a discretionary sales tax and using it for affordable housing, because it really can't be used to make buildings go vertical. It can be used to acquire land, and St. Pete would like more flexibility. I'm not really sure where that stands currently. The budget reductions due to COVID-19, I do have some bad news to deliver. We saw the draft tentative work program from DOT, and there is about a $1 billion hit to our district, District 7, and it's the biggest hit statewide. So some of the impacts are our I-275 highway modernization project from the Gandy or Gateway Expressway south to downtown St. Petersburg, that's getting deferred from 2025 to 2031. So that's a huge change, and that really affects some other projects that are going with it. And that would be a safety and a mobility improvement, because it would really, it would add managed toll lanes in the interstate corridor. They're already going to be built on the Howard Franklin Bridge, so it would just extend that continuity, and then it would make the merging and weaving on the interstate safer by having a lane continuity improvement there. The other big project that we saw deferred is the West Shore Interchange. That was a $1 billion, $1.4 billion project that was slated to begin construction in 2024. That's now been moved to 2026. And the secretary fought really hard for two weeks to even keep it in, because the original was to move it out to 2031. And the problem we have is that that'll be three years after the Howard Franklin Bridge will be completed, and you will have six lanes going into three lanes. So we're going to have a bottleneck situation that that exacerbates. And that's one where the whole region came together and said, "That is the region's number-one priority," and we don't get that very often in Tampa Bay. So we were pretty proud when the money was there, and now it's not. The other thing we lost was all the money for the northern US-19 improvements north of Tampa Road, or north of Curly Road, I'm sorry, to the Pasco County line. We only had money for design and right-of-way, but all that money went away, and it went out of the 10-year work program. Fortunately, DOT was able to keep the US-19 improvements from Main Street to Curly in place for construction in 2022. So that didn't change, and we're happy about that. Now, what the department has been able to do is they've, where they have local discretion, they've been able to actually add to the work program. All those cuts were made in Tallahassee. But for our local projects, they are bringing funds for Drew Street improvements, for design and construction in the work program, for the US-19 frontage roads project, which includes through Largo. That is funded for design and construction in the five-year work program, and they're being true to our Complete Streets Program. They're funding the State Road 580 Complete Streets Program that we awarded to Dunedin. So there's a mix of good and bad. What the department was essentially saying is, "We're preserving the safety and the maintenance projects, but the capacity projects are likely to get cut." What could change? I mentioned if the legislature sweeps more funds, then this will be a worse scenario than what I'm saying right now. If there's a federal relief bill that has state and local assistance for transportation, that could help. And then if the legislature decides that the EMCOR's toll roads are not worthy of funding, and they just got a report saying there really was no need, then that could free up some money that would go back into the work program. But the DOT can't make that decision. That's a legislative decision that needs to be made. So I think I've covered most of the other comments on there, but I did want to share the latest news with you on that, and then just to see if you have any questions for me. That's my contact information, and always happy to have a dialogue with you.
Thank you, Whit. Let's see if we have any questions.
Just a couple of comments, Whit. You mentioned your, the county, Florida Pinellas, support of Home Rule. It's been our experience, Jamie will back me up on this, and I'm sure the mayor will too. Sometimes that phrase can be a trigger phrase in Tallahassee. So we've been trying with the League of Cities to kind of soften that a little bit and talk about local voices making local choices. You know, you've seen all this marketing strategy, because we have seen some conversations just shut down, when we take the Florida League of Cities stance on Home Rule and just kind of throw it in their face. So we have tried to educate citizens about the meaning of Home Rule in the first place, and at the same time, educate legislators, that we're trying to accomplish here. And one effective tool, as it relates, and I don't know if Cheryl stole this from the county, or she developed it here, but when you talk about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund getting swept, she would put together a sheet, a one-page sheet, for each legislator to see how it impacted their district directly. And it really kind of put a fine point on it, because when they go to committee and they talk about this money and a trust fund, and it's not personal for them, you know, when you educate them and say, "Here's how it affects your district," it's very effective.
That's good advice, and I'll try to not say "Home Rule" and "local autonomy" or "local choices." I think that makes sense.
We've kind of learned it the hard way. I mean, we didn't realize how it would get people, you know, when we talked about it. And to try to share that to the rest of the Suncoasts, that we're not up there as militants, you know, trying to demand something out, and we're just trying to work together on these things.
Yeah, and what I've found is that, you know, a lot of times, they're operating from a, "One place is broken, so we're going to have to fix it everywhere."
Yeah.
And so you hear about that one bad example, but nobody hears about all the good things that are being done, whether it's CRAs or anything else.
And then the only other comment, which kind of goes into the next presentation we have, when you mentioned those mid-block crossings and the different signalization for them, you know, on the West Bay Drive project, we have a mid-block crossing, and that's one of, it's kind of a weird situation that it's such a wide, and you've often talked about posted speed versus designed speed. That is a 35 mile an hour speed limit in there, but nobody does that. So I'd be interested to know how that, what we have planned there, if it's going to be one similar to the Clearwater-Largo Road that flash yellow, or if it's going to be an all-stop, like you're talking about.
I will look forward to seeing that presentation next.
That's all I have, man. Thank you.
Since you mentioned the mid-block crossings, I would just like to mention the ones, the new ones in downtown on West Bay Drive, which is, I think, that's 35 miles an hour there as well. They're designed really well, because you get into the median, and you're only flashing on one side of the road, so the traffic only has to stop for as long as it takes you to walk 20 feet. And then you press another button to cross the other lanes. I hope that we do something like that farther down by the trail, because it's much better than stopping, having it flash both ways for that whole transit across.
Can I just get confused?
Yeah, it's designed really well, so.
Do not block intersection on the roadway is nice.
Right, absolutely.
People would pay attention to it, yeah.
Do you spray paint that one?
I did, yeah. Is that from the Arts Council?
Yes.
Well, thank you for the update. I know that it's going to be an interesting session in Tallahassee this year. We've talked a little bit about the, our strategy for our asks this year. I don't think we'll be asking for things like earmarks and much money, more policy decisions that might make our job easier as well. So thank you for the information today.
And Henry, I just want to put on the radar to have our staff follow up with him with grants, and any way we can partner together, I'm all for.
Yes, absolutely.
Be proactive for Largo.
With the $1 billion cut you were talking about, you said it's not affecting the US-19 frontage road projects? So the Tri-City Special Area Plan and all that, that's pretty much safe now for design and moving forward?
Yeah.
Although it's down the road, you know, but let's start now.
We will be getting a presentation on the frontage roads recommendations in, it might be February, when we're, and it's draft recommendations. They'll be finalized a little bit later in the year, but the funding would be, it's a few years out.
Right.
But it's a safety improvement, and we did a, we asked the department to look at the frontage roads, because we felt like there were a lot of instances where there were safety conflicts that were built into the design, and they found a lot. And so now the next step is they've got to make recommendations to the upper management within DOT, and just make sure they're good with the recommendations. But I don't think that's happened yet. They had about a two-month stop work order statewide for all their consultants, so we're a little bit further behind. That was also a pandemic-related issue. But I'm sure that the department would be happy to come and make a presentation to the city of Largo when you're ready, and just see how that ties into your Tri-Cities plan.
Okay, thank you.
One last thing. I like the priorities. I was very, when we got that presentation on the priority list and stuff like that, I really thought that was a good way to go about looking for what projects could look forward.
Thanks, Whit, for the update.
Appreciate it. I appreciate your time.
Great seeing you.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Next, I believe, we'll have our business spotlight.
Thank you so much for having us today.
Good afternoon. For today's business spotlight, I am very pleased to introduce Jen Larimer, and she's the Community Director of the Rosary Apartments. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me.
The Rosary is a brand-new 224-unit apartment complex located at 811 Rosary Road Northwest that was just completed. The first two buildings were, received their certificate of occupancy in November, and the first 20 families moved in on November 19th. The developer of the project, Range Water Real Estate, invested over $11 million into the new apartment home community, and they entered into an affordable housing density bonus agreement with the city and have reserved 20% of the units for workforce housing for a period of 30 years. So I'm going to go ahead and go into the questions that I always ask the businesses, and you could tell us a little bit more about the apartment home community and how folks could get more information. But first of all, can you tell us about your business? Tell us about the Rosary Apartments.
Absolutely. Thank you, Carissa. So Range Water Real Estate and Carlisle Realty Partners established a joint venture to develop the nine acres of property that are located at the intersection of Rosary Road Northwest and Clearwater-Largo Road. We're so excited that Rosary is now open again for traffic. Lots of people have come and told us how happy they are that they can cut through on Rosary Road again. Developers had entered into a partnership with the city of Largo to offer 20% of the homes as affordable housing density units in an effort to promote the availability of affordable homes within the city. Our three-story multifamily community offers one, two, and three-bedroom luxury apartment homes, featuring open kitchens with stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, walk-in closets, private balconies, and in-home washer-dryers. The community itself features a resort-style pool, state-of-the-art fitness center, indoor and outdoor community spaces, barbecue grilling area, private garages, and the best feature is the direct access to the Pinellas Trail. We're also a pet-friendly community. We have a fenced-in pet run park, so all of our residents can enjoy that area with their pets as well.
Great, sounds like a really wonderful community. I drove by the other day, and you did a beautiful job on all the buildings, and looks really nice. And we'd like to know, why did the developer choose Largo?
So Florida is our second largest housing management market behind our home office in Atlanta. Our organization continues to grow throughout the state, and Range Water successfully developed several projects in neighboring Hillsborough County, and we currently manage three other developments here in Pinellas. Our desire to expand our business in the Pinellas market brought us to Largo. With its prime location between St. Petersburg and Clearwater, along with the proximity to the Pinellas beaches, we knew that Largo would be a premier destination for renters. The Rosary is not only convenient to the Pinellas Trail, Largo Central Park, and the Performing Arts Center, the Heritage Village, the Botanical Gardens, and all of the top-class golf courses. So we knew that a lot of times, residents are looking for convenience, and the location of our new community is just minutes away from the retail, restaurants, and recreation. We've also instituted a preferred employer program, which promotes incentives to those who are already living and working in Largo and are looking for a new luxury rental home.
Can you tell us some of your challenges that you face as a new rental complex?
Definitely. So this year, COVID-19 has definitely been our main challenge. It caused several delays with our building construction, as well as the availability of the materials and the appliances that were needed. This contributed to a brief delay in obtaining the certificate of occupancy, which created some challenges in accommodating our incoming residents until their new homes were approved and ready for occupancy. Everybody was really understanding. We did our best to accommodate people in hotels, and pay for storage, and moving, and our team is so grateful to finally be on site and moving residents into their new homes. and moving residents into their new homes.
Okay. Um, and we're happy that we have new residents.
Thank you.
Can you also, can you tell me a little bit, or can you please tell me, what can Largo do for you? What can Largo do for your complex?
Absolutely. So as a new member of the Largo community, our team is still becoming familiar with the Largo City Code. We want to ensure that we're maintaining compliance with all of the city's guidelines. So, uh, we're very grateful for the support of all of the amazing city officials that we've been working with, including Carissa, um, as we continue to orient ourselves with operating a business in the City of Largo. Um, but we're really looking forward to our partnership with the city, um, the Local Chamber of Commerce, and we're hoping to be a regular sponsor at the events in Largo Parks.
Thank you so much. Do the commissioners have any questions at this time?
Welcome. Um, I spent this past week, I decided I was going to go over there and have lunch, and I spent two hours walking Clearwater Largo Road. Uh, I was hoping our cops didn't stop me, but they didn't, so thank you. Um, but, uh, it was a really nice development you guys have out there. Um, I, my, my, my first question is, uh, one of my questions is, for the affordable housing, what's the cost for the average, for a working, workforce housing?
Our density agreement indicates that we'll be renting to people that are within the 81% to 120% in median income category, and they will not be charged more than 30% of their gross monthly income. Um, so it will depend on the income of each particular household.
And how are you getting out word to individuals that are looking for that opportunity?
So we've done a lot of, um, internet advertising, um, we've also looked into print advertising, um, like on local billboards and bus stops. In addition to that, we've also reached out to, um, the local, um, housing offices like Pinellas County, um, and we've also been working with, um, St. Vincent de Paul.
I was just going to say, I thought that most of that was administered through the Pinellas County Housing Authority because most of, I, I thought that that's where they kept kind of that list, maybe, that, and maybe I'm incorrect, I'm not sure, but that most of their list of units, so they can continue to kind of help people get through that process and refer them to availability such as yours.
Absolutely. We're just, um, communicating with them as far as what our availability is, um, now that we're in the office. Um, we were working out of a temporary office that was closer to 66th and Elmerton for a while, so people are having a little hard time finding us. Um, so we just want to make sure that they know that we have availability and, um, and that we're now on-site and that, um, people who are interested can, can meet us right at the Rosary.
And how, I may have missed that, how many units are?
There are 44 total AFD units, um, which is 20% of the community.
Awesome, thank you. I'm sorry, you probably have more questions.
No.
Well, welcome. Um, I'm excited for, um, how nice the place looks. I'm excited for the new families that are moving to Largo. Um, I think, uh, Carissa said there's been 20 that have moved in already.
On our first day, we moved in 20. We have approximately 33 families that are currently living in the community.
Okay, awesome. And, and, um, so what, what is your expected timeline or like, I know, I know some apartment, you know, apartment complexes are, are full when they're, you know, pretty darn full. So when, when will you be there?
So we are currently at 22% leased. Um, that includes the people who already live in our community and those who have reserved a home and have not yet moved in. Um, my goal is to have the community completely leased up by, um, September 30th, by the end of the third quarter next year.
I had a, I had a question, and I always ask these kind of questions. Um, have you had a site visit or evaluation by the police department?
I have not yet. We've only been on-site, um, about 10 to 14 days, so, um, I'm definitely looking forward to meeting with the, the local police department.
Yeah, um, there's some police officers that'll be joining us later this evening, and one of them is a major from, from Operations Division, but you might consider having somebody from Crime Prevention come out and do a walkthrough. You mentioned, um, code enforcement and community standards and so forth, but the police department offers that service. They can come out and talk about lighting and, and landscaping and things like that, which I'm sure was all done during the design phase, but now that you're on-site, and that way perhaps the officers that work that area would be familiar with your office staff and the layout of the place, it might be a good idea.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for the suggestion. We'll definitely be reaching out to them.
Thank you.
Just, uh, just for your knowledge, uh, he's a former police chief. Um, in case you didn't realize that.
It's like being an ex-marine.
Right, right. Well, he's a, yeah.
Rah.
Our community is also, um, has availability for an on-site courtesy officer where, um, if we did have a member of local law enforcement that wanted to live in the community, um, they could offer a discount for them to, um, kind of help us maintain that, um, we don't have any areas that may have safety issues.
They, they have a system in place at the police department to kind of monitor that, so our officers that participate in that meet the expectations of the, of the provider. And, uh, and then those green and white cars that you see around the county, they don't belong in that complex at all.
A couple, a few questions. First of all, what's the square footage of the apartments?
So the square footage is approximately 600 to 800 square feet on the one-bedroom homes, um, 1,200 on the two-bedrooms, and I, I want to say 1,400 on the three-bedroom.
That's not bad.
There's only about nine three-bedrooms and, in the community, so they're a little bit limited on availability.
And the access to, um, mass transit rate out there on Missouri, uh, have you done any studies on whether that's going to be adequate for people, especially those who are living affordable, how, you know, in the affordable units?
We haven't done a study specifically on that, um, although we did, um, note during the development that we have the bus line that runs right up and down Clearwater Largo Road there.
Oh, okay. And, um, what are the other three, uh, communities that you talked about in Pinellas? Where are they?
So we originally developed Solaris Key, which is located, um, near Gulf to Bay and the entrance to the Courtney Campbell. Um, we also have two, um, management properties. Um, one is located on Elmerton and 66th. The name of that community is Charleston on 66th. We also have, um, the Boulevard, which is not far from Charleston.
Great, well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Excited to have you.
We're glad to be here.
And, uh, our, our staff does a really good job of getting out and doing presentations to the public, so once you get a little bit more full, uh, maybe our staff can come out and do presentations about what the city has and availabilities, the Parks Department, the Police Department. Um, and, and I think that would be a great opportunity for us to partner in a way to, um, get to know each other and, uh, get to know the area.
We would absolutely love that. We host monthly events for our residents. Um, we're, right now, we're working on a holiday event, and we're looking forward to doing a grand opening, um, and a ribbon cutting with the Chamber of Commerce in January.
And that area also falls into our CRA area, so when we start talking about that, I'd like to keep them involved with that, those discussions about what's going on and, um, getting your input and your, your, your residents' input on it.
Thank you.
Also, one last thing, just a marketing thing that I've been into, is, uh, working, also trying to work with the businesses down Clearwater Largo Road, because one thing I've always said is, if you're in the area, work together. Uh, too many of them just section themselves off and, and that doesn't work to each other. So if you guys and them can find ways to, 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 to work as a marketing-wise or just getting the word out there, I, I would recommend.
Absolutely. We have been trying to connect with, uh, Largo businesses. Um, we made, uh, these adorable little lollipop bouquets that were branded with our community name and tried to deliver them to, um, several businesses in the community. Um, we've also been connecting with some of the businesses right in our neighborhood as far as, um, purchasing products and services that we can offer to our residents as a, a welcome gift into the community.
That sounds great.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I went in Untouchables last week, and, and they're excited and a little bit scared about, about all the new people that are going to be moving in across the street.
We get rave reviews about them. Um, people are disappointed that they're closed on Mondays and Tuesdays. They, they crave the Untouchables pizza.
Um, just a, a couple of quick questions. Uh, when do you, or when do you think the, um, the project will be complete in total?
So, um, right now, we have the CO on Building 1 and 2. Um, Building 3, I don't anticipate, um, I anticipate should be ready soon, um, probably next month, uh, at some point in January. And Building 4 actually has the most units out of all four of the buildings, so that might take a little bit longer. Um, I would anticipate maybe February.
Okay.
Better than March.
Let's see, I, oh, the other question I had was regarding, um, the, the project, when we initially discussed this project, um, you know, last year or whenever, a couple years ago, probably now, um, we had discussed there was, there was going to be an art project on the, on the corner, on the front?
Yes.
I believe, probably in front of your, and, and I noticed that it looks like it's kind of marked out to be put in, but it's, uh, you have your sign up in there now, so do you have any update on that?
So I was just contacted this week that they are ready to install the, it's a beautiful sculpture they're going to be placing there, and I've reached out to a sign vendor to provide pricing for moving our sign, so that, that area will be clear for the installation of the sculpture. So that'll probably taking, be taking place within the next month.
That's fantastic. I'm looking forward to that. Good, thank you.
Is it a sculpture of something recognizable in nature, or is it abstract?
It's abstract. It looks like a, a huge crystal, in my opinion. I think it's going to be absolutely gorgeous. I believe it's going to be lit up at night, so we're really looking forward to it.
Make sure you have electric running to it.
Absolutely.
Sorry, that's a long.
Well, welcome to Largo. We're excited to have you.
Thank you so much. We're so excited to be part of the Largo community, and, um, thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you.
Beautiful complex.
Thank you, Carissa. Next, we'll talk a little bit about West Bay Drive. And this is a virtual presentation, so sit back and enjoy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner.
Um, somewhat. I put our mic on here, so maybe that'll help.
Okay, and I will certainly speak up. Uh, since this is being presented remotely, I am Barry Westmark from the Engineering Services Department. We have, we have with us Jared Schneider with Kim Lee Horn. Uh, Kim Lee Horn is a consultant for the, uh, for Pinellas County who prepared the West Bay Drive Complete Streets Concept Plan. Uh, we also have Joan Rice, who is the project manager from Pinellas County. Jared has a great, comprehensive presentation, so I will turn the screen over to him without delay. Joan and I will be available after Jared's presentation to answer any questions you may have for staff. Uh, Jared, you're up.
Great, thanks, Barry, and pleased to be here. Can everybody, uh, I guess be here virtually, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, yes, we can. Thank you.
Perfect, perfect. All right, well, yeah, I'm pleased to talk about the West Bay Drive Complete Streets Concept Plan, and it, you know, it's, it's really, uh, it's really great kind of seeing what you've done downtown and continuing that, uh, that movement and, and really building on top of that. That's what we're excited about. So really, this is a project, uh, on the right, you'll see, this is kind of our project limits. We're on West Bay Drive here from Clearwater Largo Road west to, uh, the Bellar Beach Causeway, and, you know, it's, it's serendipitous that, that WIT was here today. This, this builds off of efforts, uh, WIT and Ford Pinellas started in 2017 as, as well, as, as part of a Complete Streets pilot project, and, you know, it's really, um, kudos to the county for, for looking at this, and, and this is a resurfacing that came up and talked to Ford Pinellas and, and really started to think about what can we do, um, with this project from a Complete Streets aspect, and, and kudos to the, the city as well. Again, this is kind of building off of what y'all have done. So this is really, uh, an effort that involves a lot of partners. We have, um, have those listed there, um, on the, the bottom bullet. You know, why, why is this important? Why did we look at Complete Streets in this area? We had, um, you know, really looking at data, we had, uh, 60% of folks were, were speeding in this area when we looked at this, and, and from a safety aspect, there were a number of crashes, and really the opportunity here is to improve the pedestrian bicyclist mobility connecting the Pinellas Trail on that east side to the Bellar Causeway. So that's, that's really the big opportunity, and tying into, to other city projects, um, I alluded to that, but what you guys have done on the east there, on East Bay Drive, um, other city projects that are coming online, and then also what you've done from the, the land you, uh, land use aspect. I liked how WIT hit on that earlier, and, uh, the picture on the bottom right and, and what you're starting to do with changing that building style and the, the buildings really, um, meeting the street. So that's what, that's what we mean when we start talking about placemaking. You, you understand you're in a different environment, a different area, and you, you want to, want to slow down. So this is a, this is an image showing the, the project limits, and we basically split it into four different segments, segment, segment 1, 2, 3, and 4, and 2 through 4 are really through, uh, running through the City of Largo, and then 1, we've, we've got, um, Bellar Bluffs in, in that area. So what we have, this is an image showing what we have on that segment 2 and 4 that runs through the City of Largo today. You've, you've got 60 foot of, of pavement out there, um, the outer lanes are fairly wide at, at 13 feet, and then you've got, um, ranging from anywhere from 83 to 100 foot of right-of-way and, um, eight, eight-foot sidewalks on, on either side. So again, this is just kind of showing, uh, the existing conditions that are out there today. So then what we started to talk about, we had a number of options, we went through with the stakeholders and, and want to kind of update you on, on the elements that are being included. So what we've talked about doing is, is having a, a wider sidewalk, and, and that would provide an opportunity for bicyclists and pedestrians, uh, in their own dedicated space. And then there's, uh, 11-foot travel lanes, so the, the travel lanes would be consistent for the, all four lanes, and then a, a 12-foot median. And I'll, I'll show you a little bit different image of, of this here. What, what this is showing is, is kind of a bird's eye view, and, and what we've talked about doing is having a, a 12-foot landscape median there, um, really coordinating with the business community as this moves forward into the design phase. There's, um, anywhere from eight to nine different locations that have been looked at conceptually, um, as, as the design rolls out or as you go through that process, um, there'd, there'd be a lot of coordination with the business community just to make sure there aren't any adverse impacts, and a lot of the medians were looked at for, for areas where there's already multiple driveway connections into a business. Uh, we talked, I heard a little bit about the mid-block crossings, so looking at some opportunities, uh, for, for some additional mid-block crossings, especially around the trail, um, on the west side and, and Bellar Bluffs, there's already an, an RFB that's out there, um, so looking for some opportunities for those crossings. And then, again, we hit on this, but some consistent lanes, some 11-foot travel lanes here, and then the, the 10-foot sidewalk on the, the south side, which would be separated from the roadway, and that, that really starts to provide, you know, as we're trying to connect the trail to the Causeway, it provides that, that separated facility, you know, and, and obviously in the design, we need to look at that interaction with the, the driveways is, is always important to make sure that they're, they're safe crossings. So really looking at, um, a JPA with the City of Largo for, for landscaping, as well as the county goes through this, this resurfacing and, and their replacement of the, the clay pipes. So it's, it's really a good opportunity to start to, start to make all of these improvements at, at the same time. You never want to, you know, tear up a roadway and then have to redo it again. So I wanted to chat a little bit, although it's, uh, on the west side on Bellar Bluffs, uh, this is the segment that's, uh, west of Indian Rocks Road, you know, really looking at that intersection and west to Sunset Boulevard. There's, uh, similarly 16-foot, uh, pavement that's out there. Um, right now, that, there's, there's no plans to really, um, change that a whole lot, other than to kind of go through the resurfacing when, when that happens. Um, right now, there's, there's not funding from Bellar Bluffs on, on improvements in, in that section, above and beyond the resurfacing. But there, there is, um, Mass Arm Project at Indian Rocks Road, so that's, that's something that's, um, going to be continued to look at. And then coordination with the city, um, on, on Sunset Boulevard, this is, this is something we heard quite a bit. You know, again, this is, um, this is the connection we're trying to make to the Causeway, and, and obviously it's a east-west connection out to the beaches as well. So, but this is something we heard from a, a safety aspect that came up time and time again, where the, the lane drops here at Sunset Boulevard, and then you've got the one lane that continues to go west, so. So I, I think there's still some opportunities to talk about that, but again, no changes right now through this section. So next steps, really looking at, uh, 2021, 2022 design, uh, with input from, from partners and, and keeping you all up to date as well. The, the county, um, and already the city has kind of started some of these initial thoughts of involving the business and the neighborhoods around the, business community and the, the neighborhoods around the area. That's, that's going to be important just to kind of, you know, really show them, uh... and the, the neighborhoods around the area. That's, that's going to be important just to kind of, you know, really show them, um, the, the impacts, get their feedback at, at key milestones before going further. So again, love to come back to you all and, and get some additional feedback as the process goes forward. And, um, another next step, as I mentioned, is the JPA of the city of Largo to look at some of those, those other improvements with the, the landscape medians or the adjacent landscaping. And, uh, scheduled really looking at a, kind of a 2023, uh, construction timeframe. So with, with that, that's, that's what we've got right now, and we'll, we'll open it up for, for questions. And thanks for your time again. Excited to be here.
Thank you. Um, can, can you hear us okay?
I sure can. I sure can.
I, I'm probably sitting closest to the microphone, so if somebody else has a question, we'll make sure they speak loudly. Commissioner Smith?
Um, my question is kind of the time period a little bit. Uh, we're looking at 2023. What impact tying that in with the city hall and possibly the other development? Is that going to be on transit issues for people on, on West Bay Road Down? If all these projects are being worked on, um, I've had a lot of residents saying how roads are all being worked on altogether and it's throwing everything away. And they don't understand why you, you do these projects together. What, will that be part of the discussion?
Yeah, that, that would go, and Barry, jump in here if you've got anything else as well. Yeah, that would be kind of coordinated usually through a mobile MOT plan and kind of coordinated throughout just to, to look at the, the phasing.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, uh, Commissioner Smith, just to add to that, uh, that is part of the, the community engagement plan. Uh, we definitely, you know, anytime there's going to be construction and especially, you know, Jared made reference to, uh, so the, uh, the joint project agreement with the city where, uh, some sanitary sewer would be replaced underneath West Bay Drive. Anytime you do that kind of construction, um, there has, uh, there's, there's going to be some, you know, kind of, uh, traffic upsets. And so we want to manage that as best we can with the community.
Are we looking at more at night kind of work or during the day or shutting it down completely? Or will that be discussed?
Uh, unfortunately, it's a little too soon for us to, um, have that information. Um, uh, Pinellas County taking the lead on, uh, the design and construction, um, will be interacting with their, uh, design consultant on maintenance of traffic and when that construction will be.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, um, I had a couple of questions, um, first to do with, uh, the, well, both of them really have to do with the, the, I think the best aspect of this whole project, aside from new asphalt, i- is the, the 10 foot kind of connection from the Pinellas County Trail to the west, um, with that 10 foot sidewalk on the south side. Um, the, for, my first question is, it, it was mentioned that the, uh, the Belair Bluffs is kind of leaving that road as it is, just repaving. Is that currently a 10 foot sidewalk in the, in, on the west side of Indian Rocks Road?
On that, on that side, yeah, it's, it's, um, it's, it's a 10 foot sidewalk. It's a little bit wider than the section through, through your all's portion.
Okay, that's what I thought. I wasn't sure though. I wanted to, um, I, I was hoping that it was. Um, secondly.
And, and also there's, there's, sorry to interrupt, there's, um, portions that are 10 and then it's, it's kind of a range of eight to 10 there.
Okay. Um, you know, secondly, going east towards the trail, uh, I don't know how many, how many curb cuts there, there are for businesses. Uh, some of those businesses also front a, a side street. So I, I, I guess this is kind of for our, our side. Uh, are we going to look to reduce the number of cross, uh, the number of, uh, curb cuts, um, for pedestrian and bicycle safety? If, if we're building a trail that's, that's crossed every 15 feet by cars pulling out of businesses, um, it, it, you know, ultimately, it may not be as safe as we'd like. Um, especially if those businesses front a side street, they'd still have the same visibility, yet, yet be able to have a safer trail next to it.
Yeah, that's, that's a great comment. And I, you know, when we were going through the conceptual phase here, we, we even mapped all the properties that had two driveways or, or a side street, and there's, there's a number of them. So that's something really through that kind of business engagement phase, when, when the design starts really kind of getting actively involved in that, um, and looking at those opportunities. And Joan, I don't know if you want to add anything else, but I, you know, I, that's something the, the county will typically do with, with the design phase, with design engineer. But there's, you're right, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, um, properties out there that have multiple access. So that's, that's something I think is an opportunity.
And definitely during the design phase, we'll be looking at that, also communicating with the businesses there. And also communicating with them is where we can put in median openings as well.
Okay, right. Yeah, I mean, if, if, if you've got a median, median opening to make it easier for, for cars going westbound to cross the eastbound lanes to get into a business or whatever, vice versa. Um, and they're able, but then, then in turn, they also reduce the number of curb cuts they have down to one. It may be a win-win.
Yeah, yeah, and just to your point, this is in Belair Bluffs, obviously, but the, yeah, we saw a lot of cases like this where you had three, four driveways at some, some places or some properties.
Okay, any other questions?
What's the plan for community input? Uh, how are we going to get in touch with the businesses in the area, residents around the area? Uh, when do you plan to start that? And, uh, how long is it going to take?
So that conversation started, uh, obviously, we're not in a design phase yet, but that's, that started, we had a, a business forum, uh, as part of the Complete Streets, um, Pilot Project with, with WIT. And then, um, also the conversation started with, um, Pinellas County and the city on, on kind of reaching out and, and using your all. You guys do a good job on, on that with your all's channels, so, um, it's early on. But, yeah, really before any kind of major decisions would be made, there would be, um, basically a plan that would be laid out to kind of come back and, and decide here's, here's how we're going to communicate. Um, is it via website, um, you know, using the channels you guys already have, and then coming at those, those key milestones. So, yeah, that's something, um, and Barry, if there's anything I missed, I know that's already starting that conversation.
Uh, yes, absolutely, Jared. Thanks for that. Um, we, uh, we're working with Communications and Engagement presently, um, to start up a webpage. Um, and Communications and Engagement, uh, uh, may already have the, the beginnings of that, that webpage. Um, we will be, um, so, uh, economic development, uh, is also going to be participating with, uh, engineering and, uh, Communications and Engagement, just to make sure that we get the, uh, the absolute best outreach we can. Um, I have requested, uh, that we start that Community Engagement Plan um, in the, uh, in, in the first part of, uh, 2021, you know, January 2021, that, that kind of timeframe.
And there'll be, there'll be, you know, live touch forums or, of course, with COVID, we have to be careful about that. But we'll be sure that all the businesses along the way are, are contacted, that there's feedback and that it's all noted, right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'd just like to add that I think it's critical to, to continue to, um, let folks know that the traffic capacity will be maintained. While, while we're going to increase pedestrian safety, increase, uh, a lot of, a lot of usability of that road. We're not reducing traffic capacity whatsoever. Because that's the biggest concern that you run into.
Right.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for the update. We're excited, uh, we're excited for the project.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks for having us.
All right, we'll move on to, thank you, thank you so much. We'll move on.
Yeah, have a good one.
Thank you, you too. To the next item, which is also a, uh, remote presentation. And that is the new City Hall Public Outreach Plan.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. Can you see and hear me okay?
You're very small, but yes, we can see you.
Okay, well, the important part is that you can see the presentation, so I will share my screen now. Let me know if that looks good to everybody.
Looks good, thank you.
Okay, very good. Well, good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, Leadership and Public that is viewing tonight's work session. I am Julian Perez, Community Engagement Administrator with the city of Largo. And I am happy to share the Community Outreach Plan for the new City Hall project today. So first, uh, mostly for our public that's watching, to give them a quick overview recap of the timeline, which has been discussed at past, past commission meetings. From 2019 to 2020, the new City Hall project went through commission approval, a space needs analysis with city team members, concept designs, and the selection of a architect and construction manager for this project. So currently being in Phase Two of the new City Hall project, where site selection along the West Bay Drive corridor in downtown is in its final phase. Uh, we are in a community input, uh, section of that Phase Two. So that community input can be a big part of informing the final design and then construction and future use of the new City Hall. So that's what I'll be speaking to today is the Community Outreach Plan for the new City Hall project. And here, I want to focus on the overall project goals and how they will guide this Community Outreach Plan. So first, uh, what you see on your screen is the goals for the new City Hall project, including that first goal which is mentioned, which is the community vision of creating a vibrant and interconnected downtown. Uh, so this really came from the community and then was prioritized by City Commission at the 2017 Commission Retreat. Then the other goals for the project, uh, really to align with the other development in the area so that the new City Hall can spark economic growth, create a mixed-use facility that is used by the public, has, uh, public features such as public parking, outdoor space, and is able to provide services that are effective and efficient for our community. Additionally, we hope that the new City Hall project inspires private sector investment, construction and design features, and ultimately is a sense of community pride for the community at large, especially those in the area and those using city, city services most, most often. So through, um, the outreach plan for the new City Hall project, we want to make sure we're staying in alignment with the downtown brand. Uh, knowing that the surrounding area is also a big part of this project. And we've already heard from our community about our downtown brand overall. So in 2018, the city launched a downtown brand to gather specific insights to reach that vision of an active and interconnected downtown. So some of the specifics that came out of that feedback was architecture, a focus on natural finishes, mixed materials, uh, green spaces and landscaping, ensuring that there was thoughtful engagement in terms of creating a welcoming space, uh, whether that's through art, wayfinding signs or other features. And then some of those key areas to provide rest, shade and communal spaces in the hardscaping category. So folks can learn more about the downtown branding and project on largo.com/downtown. Uh, but really, that was just to show that we are guided by that feedback we already heard from the community. So for this specific outreach plan for the new City Hall, we do have some new goals to guide us in this process. The first is to really think about what are the current experiences of those residents, businesses, visitors that are using services at City Hall. So identifying current experiences, also receiving input on the design of a new City Hall facility, including that surrounding space. And again, that broader downtown area to ensure alignment. And also through that identification of community members' needs and interests, making sure that we're sharing that back with the project team and with leadership, um, so that you all can be aware as well of what the community is prioritizing. And lastly, you know, we really hope that this outreach plan will lead to a completed project that represents the community with pride and is also used by the community as a new great public space in our downtown area. So to do this, we started by thinking about our key stakeholders. Of course, we want to think about the community at large, but we also want to be thoughtful about thinking of different stakeholder groups to make sure we're not leaving anyone out. So a few of the considerations that we looked at were who's using the space regularly already? They have intimate knowledge of what are the pros and cons of our space right now and what could really inform the priorities in the design of a new space. Also thinking about those that are going to be living nearby the new City Hall facility, businesses and developers that may be investing or considering investing nearby. And again, making sure that we have enough, uh, public outreach that we're reaching the community at large and having multiple ways for our taxpayers, uh, future residents and, uh, community stakeholders to also share their input and participate. So we organize this by separating our key stakeholders into a few different groups to inform the different aspects of our outreach plan. So the first group is our business community, again, thinking about, uh, the perspective of local business that will be near the facility, future business, and that would be the Chamber of Commerce, um, different business groups, and making sure that the business community has a voice in this project. Also knowing that they use the City Hall for services permitting, et cetera. We also thought of our nonprofits and civic groups. Uh, one, they're a great way to make sure that we're connecting with different demographics across our community. Um, and two, we want to make sure that our City Hall services are aligning with the services of our nonprofits and our civic groups as well. That we're strengthening each other, lifting each other up, so that's another key group that we identified. Uh, our third group here are those that are commonly using City Hall, um, services and commonly using City Hall facilities. So that's our advisory boards, um, our Citizens Academy participants, community ambassadors and others that can provide us with some great insights. And then, um, again, of course, we want to be thinking about the community at large and how we can reach residents across Largo demographically, geographically, et cetera. So how are we going to do this? Um, so in our public outreach efforts, we want to make sure that we're using a variety of communication channels, whether that's the website, e-newsletters, digital signage, uh, media releases, and also thinking about those community partnerships, how to share information through those groups we already have relationships with, and making sure that we have printed media and signage as well for those that don't have that digital access. So at the bottom, you see a few different icons that represent some of the key ways we hope to get community input through this outreach plan. Uh, so one major focus is going to be an online survey. All of this, of course, is informed also in the current state that we're in, wanting to make sure that we're keeping our community and team members safe and healthy during this time. So one focus is an online survey. We also plan to have interactive webinars that will focus on those different stakeholder groups, including inviting the community at large, so making sure that we hear from our business, our nonprofits and our, um, high users, so to speak, of City Hall services and facilities. Also want to make sure that we have an easy email for folks to be able to sign up for project updates so that we can keep that feedback loop going and share as there are updates to the project, um, so that we're not just taking information, but it's going both ways. Um, and then knowing that not everyone has that digital access, making sure that we have a phone number where folks can call, uh, directly if they want to share feedback or have any questions about the project. Um, and then being able to have that access to the broader project team as well for any of those more technical and specific questions. So this outreach timeline shows kind of where we're at now and our plan for these outreach efforts. So this outreach timeline shows kind of where we're at now and our plan for these outreach efforts. And so this month, December 2020, we have largo.com/newscityhall as a website where folks can already sign up for project updates so they can be the first to know about the different ways they can provide input. We'll be sharing some social media polls to gain interest and get some initial thoughts on design features of the new City Hall and surrounding space. And then we'll also hope to launch the survey this month as well. So we're in close communication with the project team, including the architect, to make sure that we're asking the right questions that can actually be part of that design process. And that survey will include a project overview video so that residents aren't coming in without any context of the project at large before they dive into that survey. So in January 2021, we hope to get a interim survey report. Hopefully, we'll have heard from many of our community members and different stakeholders by then. Some of the key takeaways from that kind of midpoint survey report will be shared in those virtual webinars with the stakeholder groups. So we have four planned currently for January. And then we do plan to close out the survey that month of January so that we can match the timeline of the design team. So in February 2021 is when there'll be a final report of the survey and input from the webinars. So the webinars will include presentations, but also an interactive component to have that connection with those stakeholders and community members. And during that month of February, we'll be compiling that information and sharing back, not just with leadership, with you all, but also wanting to keep that feedback loop with the community again so we can keep that communication open. And then March through May 2021, that feedback will then be incorporated into the final design phase of the new City Hall project, and again, keeping that feedback loop going with the community. So this slide just provides a few examples, broad examples, of outreach questions that we'll be focusing on in the survey and the interactive webinars and polls. So we'll be asking people, you know, what types of sustainability features would you like to see? What types of businesses would you want to be part of using near the new City Hall? What would you use most? And really asking them to prioritize what are the most important elements to them, whether that's indoor elements of the public use space of the City Hall building or the outdoor elements of the new City Hall building that we hope will give people a chance to interact in a mixed-use space as well. And then, you know, really asking them what, you know, what would they, what would they use for folks that currently frequent City Hall and folks that might live nearby and would be, you know, often walking by that area. So this is just a sample of those types of outreach questions. We'll be looking at, you know, some closed-ended questions, open-ended questions, having that dialogue with folks during the webinars, also asking people to prioritize their interests so that that can really inform the design team as well. So just as a quick recap, some of the things that are going to be starting in the coming weeks and months are those social polls, a robust community survey, which will be largely online, but we do want to make sure we're adapting to those with low digital access. So we're happy to accommodate for paper surveys for community members that need that, maybe having those at different facilities. Same with the virtual webinars. If we have community members that don't have access to be able to participate in those, you know, definitely thinking of the community, the city facilities as a resource for community members to participate in a public space if they don't have their own Wi-Fi or digital access. And so as I mentioned, and for community members watching, you can already go to largo.com/newscityhall and sign up for those email updates, and there'll be additional information added to that page as it comes and as the survey is launched. And there will also be a direct phone line added there so that once we get rolling with the community input phase of this project, that folks have a way to connect with us through several different channels. So that is really our community outreach plan. Again, this is going to be through 2020 to 2021, with the construction phase being in that 2022 to 2023 timeframe so that our community, city team members, and city leadership can enjoy a new City Hall come 2023. And I'm open for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Julianne. Any questions? Commissioner Carroll?
Yeah, Julianne, looking at the stakeholders, and I'm sure in our high-performance organization, this has already been addressed, but some of our, one of the groups is city employees, so that when they are out in the field providing services to the community, when someone asks them a question, they have a general idea of what this timeline is going to be or they can direct that citizen to all the resources you mentioned. So I'm sure that's already being considered. I just want to make sure that our employees are familiar with what we're trying to accomplish here and, you know, because the only thing more damaging than no information would be misinformation going on.
Absolutely. That's a great point, and thank you for highlighting that and to make sure that city employees are a resource that are up to date to be able to share how community members can engage in the process.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that touches on from two aspects. I think that we'd like to get real meaningful input from the people that will work in City Hall as well as all the city employees, and more for the city in general, as well as make sure that they know where we are in the process and know how other people can participate and know the timeline and kind of the broad-based plan is important. Any other questions?
Congratulations, Julianne.
Thanks very much.
Well, thank you for an excellent presentation, and I don't see anybody with any questions, so thank you. You must have answered all of them. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up, Homeless Task Team Report.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor Brown and honored city commissioners. My name is Sean Lopez. I'm with the Office of Performance and Budget. I'm a member of the Homeless Task Team. With me, I've got Arrow Woodard. She's with our Community Development Department and also a member of the Homeless Task Team. And then a little bit later, we're going to be hearing from Officer Steiner, who's going to swap out with Arrow to be able to talk about the Street Outreach Team. He's on the Street Outreach Team. So we're very excited to be able to share this information tonight in this presentation. We've got a lot of information, but we tried to put it in an easily digestible way. So with that, I'll get right into what we're going to cover. So we're going to talk about a background on the Task Team. We're going to go into some local context and data that we've compiled on homelessness within the city. We're going to highlight some of the new protocols, referrals, and education that we've developed. We're going to talk about the Street Outreach Team's kind of early stats and early successes. And then we're going to end with talking about what's next for both the Task Team and the city. So a quick background. The city has a homeless policy work group, which is made up of executive leaders in the city, and they identified a need to have some frontline perspective from employees at lower levels in the organization to create some actionable plans to address particularly street homelessness within the city. So this was true high-performance organization embrace, and we had a micro-business that was put together. And so the work group initiated a task team in January of 2020. We're made up of 11 members across seven departments. And we met in January, put together our charter, and developed goals, and then got to work. And we've been meeting regularly since. I highlighted one item from our charter there, that we strive to reduce the impacts of homelessness on city services, neighborhoods, and commercial districts, and most importantly, improve the outcomes of individuals experiencing street homelessness in Largo. We really want to emphasize that because this is something that, you know, every member of the Task Team were really passionate about, trying to connect these members of our community with programs and services that may help them reach more permanent housing. So that's a quick background. Here's a...
Can you go back to that?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're good.
All right. So this is just a quick kind of organizational chart view of all the members. So you can see we're really made up of team members across multiple departments. We have the Police Department, Fire Department, Public Works, the Library, Park Staff, Administration, and Community Development. So this next section, we're going to get into some of the data and some of the local context. So my role on the team has really been kind of gathering data and trying to put some data behind some of the decision-making to be able to provide that to both the work group and you on the commission also. So we're going to cover kind of these things here. And after each slide, I'll pause for questions as we kind of digest the information. So we have our Largo Police Department call data. So this is call data for calls related to homeless activity. We have both a heat map that we'll cover and also the breakdown of the call volume over the past several years and the call nature of those calls. Then we have the Largo Fire Department EMS call data, which is provided from the county, and I'll talk a bit about some of the challenges with that data. But we'll also go into the call volume from Pinellas Safe Harbor. Then Arrow will get into the City of Largo 2020 point-in-time count data that we have, and then she'll also talk about some of the recent COVID-19 trends that staff are reporting. So the first slide here, this is the heat map that we've been able to create. This was data provided by our telecommunicators over in the Police Department. So we have data ranging from the beginning of 2015 to October of 2020. And what we've done with this data that we were provided is essentially it's a giant spreadsheet of call records is we've been able to put this into our business intelligence software to be able to create a heat map and kind of basically, you know, put that data on a map. So this data that we have here on the screen, I have a screenshot of just looking at the 2020 data. So this is essentially all of the calls are put onto this heat map. So basically, what a heat map is, just for everybody's background, is it takes data that has some kind of a geographical relationship and it puts it on a map, and then based on the frequency and proximity to other calls, it'll kind of create this glow for places that have a high frequency of calls. So looking at this map, starting from left to right, you see down here on Walsingham, you see at the shopping center down here, there's a cluster of activity along Clearwater Largo Road and Missouri, running from north and south, and then along East Bay Drive, and then also along some of the intersections here at Olmerton. We see some of the activity highlighted there. So with that, any questions on the heat map that we've put together here?
So that's just, that's just calls for service, not necessarily... I mean, you know, a lot of those are intersections and, you know, I would say where there's a congregation of businesses, so it's just calls for service.
These are calls?
I mean, you shouldn't be looking into it anywhere other than that.
Right. These are just calls for service. So any time that the Police Department was called, there was some kind of interaction with the dispatch and officer, you know, we were able to tag that. And the benefit of this is that the Street Outreach Team has been able to use this information rather than seeing just this list of kind of data and not really, you know, now we're able to plot this on a map to see, oh, you know, these are the areas to kind of focus your efforts as a Street Outreach Team. Thank you.
How does that, how has that changed over time? Have we looked back two, three, four years?
So we've got the data from 2015. I just put the 2020 data on this kind of screenshot because generally, the year looks about the same. You know, these are kind of the main areas where call volume has shown.
I was just going to point out one caveat, too, because I knew it was something you all would be looking at if you come up with Roosevelt 19 corridor a lot. Is a good portion of that eastern area is served by the Sheriff's Office, so it's not going to show up in our Police Department.
You are muted. The host would like you to unmute your microphone. You can press star six to unmute.
I think you need to hang up.
You are unmuted.
I think it's still being broadcast somewhere.
Anyhow, I just wanted to point that out because that was one thing when I first saw this, is why maybe the district doesn't stay on the east side and it's likely that their sheriff was wanting to...
Sure.
The other thing on a heat map like that, and correct me if I'm wrong, it can be a little deceiving because it can be the same individual or couple of individuals with multiple calls as opposed to clusters of homelessness around the city.
And that's why we look at multiple sources of data because any one source doesn't tell the whole story by any means.
This may be a little off the wall, but do you have any data about time of day?
We do have time of day information, so we can look at kind of the period of day, you know, mornings, afternoons, evenings, things like that. This is all a lot of data that I think that as we continue to kind of analyze it in the Task Team, and then again, working with the new crime analyst that'll be coming aboard with the Police Department to really kind of look at this data and, you know, use it to be able to best help the Street Outreach Team kind of target their efforts the best way.
I'm curious also, just going up here, does the county, the Sheriff's Department collect data also?
I do not know off the top of my head if they track like specifically for calls involving homeless activity. That's something that we can find out.
I'm just curious because if you throw it in our map or their map, it may not be the picture.
Officer Steiner could probably answer that when he comes in. I don't think that they currently do. I know we've run into that with EMS and with HIPAA, which we'll get into later, but there was some restrictions on countywide systems that we were not able to get, so... But we can find that out from Officer Steiner.
And Commissioner Carroll, your question is a good segue into the next slide we have here, which is looking at the individual breakdown of the data. So this is two charts here. We have the call volume from 2015 to October of 2020, and then the homeless-related activity call nature on the right side there. And I promise, I know how to spell the word trespass, but I think that my keyboard put two S's in there. But that doesn't take away from the data here. So looking at the call data that we have, we've had 18,710 total calls for service involving persons experiencing homelessness, which averages about two, eight to 10 days, or eight to 10 calls per day, to kind of put that into context. And Commissioner Carroll, one of the things I wanted to mention here is that in 2019, the Police Department started tagging calls involving homeless persons with an identifier, a 2H identifier. So that's something that we in the Homeless Task Team feel that the new crime analyst coming on board will be able to use that identifier to be able to track those individuals who may be kind of, you know, repeats on the calls for service to be able to really kind of attract those folks and try and get them connected with programs and services to get them into more permanent housing. So there was one trend in the data that we wanted to highlight here, and it's a very kind of an initial trend that we're going to keep watching, and that is the quarter three numbers from 2020 compared to 2019. In 2020, we had 493 calls for service in quarter three, and in 2019, there were 756 calls. And the reason I wanted to highlight that quarter three is that happened to be the start of the quarter where the Street Outreach Team started their efforts and started making contacts with folks in the community. So it's something that we want to be able to track and see, is this something that may be just, you know, a fluke? Or is this something where as we continue to see the trends, we're starting to see the benefits of their efforts? You know, reduced call volume from the Police Department as they make contact with individuals themselves on the Street Outreach Team. So that's something we're going to continue to track.
So in Q3, from last year to this year, you've seen a 35% reduction in the calls for service?
Yes.
And that is correlating that to having your Task Team as well as the PD and their efforts?
Yeah, that's something we don't want to make any assumptions yet because it's only three months of data, but it's something that looks good and we're going to keep tracking it. So we thought about, well, is this related to COVID-19? And then we looked at the quarter two data, and the quarter two calls were around, I believe, around 815 calls. And, you know, COVID-19 had an impact in quarter two, but the difference was that we did not have the Street Outreach Team activated at that time.
I mean, that could be an anomaly because businesses being closed because of COVID would reduce the number of trespass calls, and, you know, I mean, you're right.
Yes, yeah.
All the time.
So it's definitely something that we want to be able to keep tracking and, you know, to be able to see if we can see stronger correlations in the future. Any other questions on this slide?
The calls you're getting are mostly from businesses and not from, you know, residents, homeowners or citizens from businesses?
That would probably be a better question for Officer Steiner when he comes to talk about that. Well, I just have kind of the breakdown of the call nature, but I don't know if those are calls from residents or businesses. I assume probably the majority of trespassing may be from businesses, but let's ask him when he comes in, we'll speak about that. Okay, the next slide here. So this is the fire and EMS call data from the county. So one of the challenges that we've had with looking at the county's data is that they do not tag calls related to homeless activity in any kind of special way, for instance, like a Largo Police Department does with a 2H call. I do want to put a point here that we'll talk on later is that the task team thinks we've kind of identified a solution that the city can pursue to be able to make up that data gap. So we can't tell the difference between, you know, the calls for service out in the community that are EMS calls that may be related to homelessness or not, but what we can look at is the calls related to service at Pinellas Safe Harbor. So from 2015 to August of 2020, there have been 2,912 calls for service from Pinellas Safe Harbor, which averages about six to seven calls per week. We have noticed a lower call volume from June to August from 2020 compared to 2019. Again, that's something we're tracking that may be related to the outreach team's efforts, but also may be related to the lower capacity that Safe Harbor has because of COVID-19 or a number factor. So it's just more trends that we're going to keep watching, but we wanted to let you know about that.
When you talk about EMS calls at Safe Harbor, do they originate from a homeless person with a cell phone calling, or are they from staff at Safe Harbor?
I think it's all, it's just coded to that address. So it's any of them by address.
Yeah, so we pulled, you know, Largo Fire Rescue was able to provide us with all the call data, so we were able to look at just that specific address and then see all the calls to Safe Harbor and then be able to kind of extrapolate that based on this. So these calls here, we can't say that they involve a homeless individual or not, but what we can say is that they're to Safe Harbor.
Because it has, the idea has been forwarded that medical personnel at Safe Harbor might help offset 911 calls with paramedics at Safe Harbor, but I'll leave that to you guys.
The countywide system potentially might be able to add that code on to be able to generate overall data, but they can't, like in our Fire Rescue folks cannot code a call, they cannot relate it to homelessness and their name and all of that information together. So it's got to be completely separate. So there's likely limitations even on collecting that on a countywide basis. And Sean's going to show a little sample of what we're proposing to do in lieu of that, to be able to still try and capture some of that data.
What about the nature of the...intoxication, overdose, you know?
They do collect overdose data. I don't know that all of those are related to homelessness, though. A lot of them on the 19 corridor typically, they find a lot in cars and things like that, too, and within residents as well. So it may have some correlation, but it's definitely not a direct correlation to homelessness.
I was thinking about at Safe Harbor particularly, you know, it could be all sorts of illness, you know, related, you know, medical type issues, but do we have any idea what the nature, how the nature of these calls break out?
Yeah, so, yeah, we have that data. I should have included it in here now that I think of it similar to what we did with the PD data to show kind of the call nature. That's a good point. That's where we can get you that information, that call nature breakdown.
I could be wrong, but my math gives me closer to 10 calls per week.
I'll check my math there. I'll trust your math a little bit more than mine here. But, yeah, I think if you include looking at 2020 and trying to extrapolate that data out to the rest of the year to be able to include that full year of data.
I mean, even if, you know, in any given year up until 19, it was over 10 a week, close to 10 a week. But I hate to challenge an OMB person on math.
No, we'll double check in there, and it may have been just because of the data that we have for 2020 isn't a complete year. So that may have thrown it off. So I think I can rerun it just for 2015 to 2019, and you're probably right, that does look like it would be higher than six to seven, but I think that that 2020 number and having to extrapolate that out for the rest of the months that aren't included may have kind of lowered that volume.
Also, the street outreach team and as well during the pandemic, the Homeless Leadership Alliance has had teams going out in the field to check on people, paint out masks and so forth that are street homeless. But they've also been trying to get them signed up for the Medical Blue Card, that's the mobile medical unit for homeless individuals. So they're trying to get them signed up and connected even while they're out in the field, too, to try and give them that option instead of calling 911.
You've already said it, but that is the physical address of Safe Harbor. Those are the calls.
Those are the calls.
So if they're out on 49th Street and they're not on the property address, we're not capturing that right now.
Yeah.
You know, it's an EMS call, but you don't know if it's homeless related.
We could draw a circle around that, right? And capture, you know, the general, the close in geographic area where you can make the dangerous assumption that they're related to Safe Harbor.
Yeah, that's something we would be more involved with the GIS team to kind of create like a GIS map for that. But again, that's the challenge with the county's data is that, you know, we don't know if that's a call involving a person experiencing homelessness or just a regular EMS call. So that's the challenge that we have with county's data.
Or if you have, you know, four units responding to a car accident, things like that, too, it may be, you know, it would show more data from more points of that location.
Moving on to the next slide here. So this is the Point in Time Count data. Arrow, do you want to cover this slide?
Sure. So January 2020 seems like five years ago, but here we are, almost back to next January. So at that time, there is an annual update to the Point in Time Count data so that, and this is capturing one day in time of how many people are street homeless in our community. And every year, the Homeless Leadership Alliance adds that data together so we can evaluate trends and so forth countywide. But as in January, on that date, it was 2,226 individuals that were identified as homeless. Fifty-four individuals identified that they mainly stay in Largo. And the big caveat with this is we surveyed more than that on the day of the count, but they look to see if there's any duplication, and if they were counted in shelter data, then they're taken out of the other data and only counted once. So of course, we may have a lower overnight homeless population, but as Safe Harbor opens in the morning, that number may look drastically different, and that could be the reasons, too, where we saw so many people out on the street that day versus what said they lived in Largo. And of course, we also know that the east side of the city has Clearwater address, so people may say they typically stay in Clearwater when they're really in Largo. So I, Safe Harbor reported 260 individuals on that night of the count, and back in 2017, they reported 407. So there was also a trend at that time that it was decreasing in their census, and this was before the pandemic, so this didn't have reductions due to the pandemic. Age ranges, you can see on the chart, you know, the biggest group is that 26 to 50, but we also have folks that are 50 years and older making up almost the same amount of that population. And you can see that the largest reason for why they give, that caused their homelessness on that event, was a loss of job, financial problems, or not enough income. And the secondary reason, family issues, which, you know, the city's got our mental health team as well, so they work closely with our street outreach team because this is, you know, a growing issue as you can see as well. So, and then the other reasons are given with eviction, alcohol or drug problems, and disabling conditions. The majority of individuals are male in the street homeless population.
Would it be fair to say on that slide that, I mean, those are self-declared reasons, right? That's what the person tells you in the field?
Correct. Yep.
So I tend to presume that number four, alcohol or drug problems, is probably contained in number one and number two.
Typically, typically, the story goes, this happened, so it caused this, so it caused that, it's a ripple effect. And so usually, there's multiple parts of this that are impacting that. So, yep.
Did you break down these reasons by, excuse me, I'm sorry. Did you break down these reasons by gender?
I don't know if they have that in the Point in Time Count. I don't think it is broken down in there by that, but we have the data for the folks that responded on Largo, so we might be able to do that as well and see that.
I'm really interested in seeing family issues question broken down by gender.
I think that's broken down on the one that we get through the COC. They break it down into everything. The dashboard that Skylar usually does, breaks it down into...
Yes, there is a new dashboard that Commissioner Hulks is talking about. The Homeless Leadership Alliance is one thing that the Funders Council's pushed for that I sit on, is more transparency in the outcomes from the different shelter providers, the rapid rehousing programs, street outreach, and so forth. And so just recently, a full dashboard with all sorts of ways you can manipulate the data on there to look and see what the success rates are of different programs to get them in housing. You can look down to the provider level on that as well. It's taken a couple of years because we really wanted to make sure that the data going into the system was accurate, so that was truly reflecting where we're at.
Every year, the report is more finite than the year before. But also, I wanted to ask you, did it rain, didn't we have bad weather this year on the count?
It did for the first, like, hour and a half. It was like tornado warnings out, if I recall. Again, seems so long ago. But, you know, all of our volunteers showed up at 5:30 in the morning, in the dark, in the rain. And so a lot of times, Largo doesn't have a lot of internal meeting places, and so there was probably more congregant areas and some of the other locations throughout the county. We had folks at day labor, it was pretty busy there that morning and so forth, too, but a lot of the parks didn't really have a whole lot of folks, probably because of that in that morning session.
Yeah, I just felt like we had a little bit less count that particular day.
But we did, you know, we went out three times, I think, throughout that day, so we went back to those same areas throughout the day. So like 49th Street corridor, you know, we saw increases, 66 and so forth like that, too.
Question also coming in from the...in that dashboard, is there a question, as I know that I've bundled up the resources, the LGBTQ...
Yes, they, yes, that is, that information is also on there, that dashboard. Well, it's broken down different than this. It's more elaborate.
They might not be street homeless, they might be cat surfing, you know, a lot of the youth.
But that's one of the things, if you slept on a couch, they don't necessarily count that as homeless.
Right, and that was, I think this is the emphasis of what you guys are talking about in almost all of this, is this is street homeless for people.
Right, and it's that day.
And, well, yeah, right, it's one day.
Yeah, it's at one point in time, yeah.
So, but I, so, not to, obviously, understand, you know, your concern and agree with that concern, but I think a lot of the conversation that we're having here is for people who are homeless on the street and a lot of folks, there's probably thousands and thousands more people who are technically homeless, who might have somewhere a roof over their head every night or something, you know, they're standing at a friend's house or they, you know, found a shelter.
I think we've found is the hard age is like high schoolers because they don't want to admit that they're homeless. So when they try and do like the school counts and the under 18 counts, those numbers are not always accurate because there are, you know, high school kids that are living on the streets, but they're still going to school, but they don't want to admit that they're homeless. So those numbers, I know, is it still called HEAT, the school board?
Yeah, they have the HEAT.
Group that they have, yeah. So they have a hard time accumulating the exact numbers for high school age.
We do capture, we do the survey for couch surfing as well. There's the HUD definition of street homelessness that gets reported to HUD, but then the Point in Time Count overall report also counts what is reported in the school systems and so forth, which can pick up the couch surfing and things like that in those numbers. So that number does look a lot larger than the street homeless population.
Definitely go to the website because they really break it down into, everything that you are thinking of is on there in some aspect, so.
I just wanted to make sure that all people do.
Oh, absolutely, yes, it is.
And we, even with the data we have, I'm trying to think on the spreadsheet because it does have a gender question. So in this year, we expanded the choices on there as well, so we might be able to cross look just on the 54 that reported for Largo and see what those reasons were for those individuals. So we can take a look at that.
I think you can see in the zero to 25 category, there's only two. And family resources, of course, would be, you know, mostly concerned with, you know, with youth, and it's not showing up there, so.
We, the Homeless Leadership Alliance has a youth homeless task team that are, I guess they're task team, right, committee that meets, that are made up of currently and formerly homeless youth aged 13 to 24. And so they provide not only feedback on programs and so forth and needs, but also they help plan events and outreach and marketing materials for the day of the Point in Time Count specifically to try and reach their age group. So they did targeted events in certain areas with like giveaways and things like that and tried to get some of the social media information out there to try and get folks to come to certain locations to fill out the survey on those days, so.
Very curious, but you work in the library, a lot of them don't talk about that kind of stuff, and they surround themselves with other, you protect themselves from partner. In this study, we think we're out there, and you're saying, I get that part about how more reluctant people to want to participate in something like that because of fear of being, you know, I mean...
Yeah. Absolutely. I can't answer that for sure. I was in here kind of coordinating the volunteers at something, there is a diversity and inclusion committee with Homeless Leadership Alliance, too, so I think that they're probably working on collecting more of that information and finding out better ways to really reach out and draw out people to get, find out what their needs are and connect them to services.
That's a new committee this year. I think we're just starting this year. They just revamped the whole, we have the founders and providers and stuff, but now we have, there's a point, a specific point in time, the diversity and inclusion, there's advocacy, there's, so they've taken us and split us up out of our COC board, there's 27 members, and split us up into smaller groups to cover all of these different avenues.
Libraries are a great resource, too, so we definitely keep them firmly involved with everything, for sure. All right, so just a little bit about homelessness during COVID-19. I participated in the weekly homeless provider phone calls for most of the pandemic, it's now down to monthly, but we had staff from Clearwater on the call as well as St. Petersburg, and then all the homeless providers, and they'd give, you know, roundtable update each week on what they're seeing in conditions. Most of the shelters are still operating at a lower capacity than they can take to allow for social distancing. They did have a position added at the Health Department specifically to assist our shelters in doing the best that they could to make sure that there wasn't outbreak in a really vulnerable population in there, and they've had amazing results. They had a whole connection to hotel spaces that were available if someone was awaiting test results or was tested positive and needed to quarantine so that they wouldn't affect others at the shelter, and that's worked really well. Some interesting things about the population they did see at the shelters during the time. Pinellas Hope really saw an increase for most of the pandemic with aging individuals that had severe chronic medical conditions that were really in a vulnerable position. And then recently, they've seen a shift that both Pinellas Hope and Safe Harbor saw this influx, maybe, I think it was about a month or two ago, of younger, like, young 20-something... maybe, I think it was about a month or two ago, of younger, like young 20-something males that didn't seem to have a whole lot of work experience. Pinellas Hope tries to connect people with jobs and so forth. And she, they weren't really sure why it happened or where they were coming from. But all of a sudden, it was like this uptick on that level. So I think we have a meeting this week, so I'll know more coming up on that. But those are some of the trends in that area. I think that's about it. I had on this.
Can we get a copy of this?
Sure, sure. You know, one thing I also forgot to mention, so the Homeless Leadership Alliance's group that was going out handing out food and masks and checking on people, because they didn't want everyone clustering at shelters too, is they started handing out Narcan. And at least in St. Pete, I know they're doing as another way to try and stave off some of the overdose calls that they were getting to 911. Yep, sorry. All right, oh.
No, go ahead.
Okay. So as part of our task team, one of the things that we wanted to really create is we, there's different people throughout the city organization that interact at different levels with homeless individuals. And we find it, whether it's at the front, you know, front steps of City Hall, at the library, public works or streets and drainage when they're out, you know, doing ditch cleaning or whatever. There's, there's different interactions throughout the city. So we wanted to make sure that staff had information and also had some standard protocols based on what your interaction level would be so that they know what to do and what not to do. But also for a homeless population, that they're getting a similar interaction from any staff member at the city and what they could expect to really try and make that focus too on trying to get people connected with services. So our street outreach team now has contact cards. We also set up an email address. It's homelessoutreach@largo.com. And so any staff member, if they see someone, they can email them. But Sean's got something better coming up soon he'll tell you about. And then also, we have these blue cards that the county gives us for the homeless point in time count. We've got a bunch of those that have, it's like business sized fold out card. It has a ton of contacts for medical services, shelters, food, that kind of thing for homelessness. So those are readily able to be handed out.
Is this one right here?
Oh, yes. He's got an example. He keeps it in his wallet, ready to go. And then also on largo.com, now there's a page called homeless outreach. And so there's some information on there. We'll also, I don't, are we going to be putting the protocols there or on the Team Largo? On the Team Largo, that's what I thought. So the three protocols we've developed so far, one is just for the general staff on what, what your interaction should look like if, if, if you come across someone that's experiencing homelessness. And also, obviously, connections to our street outreach team. If you see someone, this is how you can let street outreach team know, you can communicate with them. If there's no laws being broken, you know, treat them like anyone else, be respectful and so forth. If, you know, if there's a component for danger or something like that, obviously treat it in a way that everyone stays safe, so. The other one is on homeless encampments. And so this is coordination with our community standards division and also our, our homeless street outreach team and law enforcement. And then also, we are working on the, the medical response reporting. And so this is trying to figure out the best way for our EMS folks and our fire folks to be able to respond and, and report and so forth with homeless cases. So with that, that leads into our unique innovative tool that Sean's going to share about homeless data collection and sharing.
Yeah, so while I talk about the, the new homeless activity reporting tool, Eric, if you want to swap out with Officer Steiner. Officer Steiner will join us to talk about the street outreach team after the homeless activity reporting tool. But we're very excited about this. So this is a, a solution that we've been in coordination with IT and the GIS team to be able to work on a, a tool that city staff can use. And it's, it's just right on, on city devices, on phones to be able to, to plug in information about any interactions involving persons experiencing homelessness. And we're in the pilot testing phase of this, but it offers quick, real-time reporting that goes right to the, the street outreach team. Officer Steiner here.
Hello, everybody.
And, and they're able to see all the information that the individual, that the city employee will plug in that information. And.
You're good for chairs.
I made it.
I used to have an arms on the chair.
Yeah, but, but the street outreach team is able to get an email within, you know, practically real time after a, a report is submitted. And they're able to see all that information and see it pop up right on the map of where that, where that individual or group or encampment was, was spotted. And there's contact information so that they will be able to follow up with the, with the city employee to be able to get any additional information. And we're pilot testing this right now with some select fire, parks and community standard staff. And it's something that, that, that we think, it's, it's a separate reporting tool from the county's EMS service. So it will be separate from, from any HIPAA issues and things like that. And it's, and it's kept on, on the city's ArcGIS server. So we think that this is a, a good solution to that kind of data gap, gap that we have right now involving calls for service for, for our firefighters. In addition to having a, a resource for a lot of other city staff who, who have regular interactions with people experiencing homelessness, to be able to get that information right to the street outreach team and to be able to keep that data and be able to track trends and make some good, good decision making based off of that, that data. And this, this is definitely a solution that's made possible by, by the city's continued investment into mobile technology. You know, this, this was something Lieutenant Anthony over in Station 38 was, was working with where they had their flip phones and they weren't able to be able to access this, this tool on there. So he was able to work with the IT department to get that, those, those city devices upgraded to smartphones. So they will be able to have this app on their phone and to be able to do that reporting effectively. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to, to Officer Steiner to talk about the, uh, street outreach team.
Can you back up one time?
Yes.
I can't read the form. Is that a one sheet? And what is the data that's captured on it?
So, so it's, it's, that's just a kind of screenshot of, of the app. But, but the, it's a quick selection. So you're able to select either if you, if you've identified an individual, a group or an encampment. And then depending on what you select, you're able to give some, some, some information about that basic demographic information that will go to the street outreach team. If it's a group, you can talk about the demographic information of the group. If it's an encampment, it'll allow you to talk about kind of more information about it. And you're able to use the, the mapping feature to get a geolocation of directly where you are so that all that information goes right to, to the street outreach team.
And the street outreach team will, will come out and then they'll capture even more data.
And most importantly, they'll be able to, to hopefully be able to find that person and be able to provide the, the programs and services for that person.
Okay, thanks.
Oh, the, yep. This one here. Well, yeah, let me, let me cover this slide here first then. So this is just some quick demographic stats that we received from Directions for Living, which is the, who we have contracted out for the street outreach caseworker. So the team was activated in June of 2020 and there was that delay getting started due to, due to COVID. Directions for Living also provides the Mental Health Navigator Services. So this is a kind of a demographic breakdown of the 233 unique face-to-face contacts that the, the team has met in those first, first couple of months. As you can see, it's, the age ranges are similar to the kind of the point in time count. But the one big difference is, there's a big difference in the, in the, the gender distribution that, from the point in time count to, to what we have here. And the, the breakdown by, by race and ethnicity is similar to what we've, what we've seen in the point in time count too. So just wanted to highlight that one difference there in the gender information. Any questions on, on this slide? Okay, now move on. Okay, there you go.
Okay, so basically I have to, I have to give a monthly report of everything that I do to my supervisor every month. So I'm just going to go base, explain what all these things mean. So the top homeless referrals, it's if another officer documented a field contact or an email that they had came across somebody that needed some services or something like that. And so that's 24 contacts from other officers. The one below it is the homeless contact FIR. So every time I make contact with a person experiencing street homelessness, I document it in an FIR, which is a field contact. It basically just has their, their name, their date of birth, their information in a brief, I spoke with the person, did not want any services at this time, or did not want any services at all. So that was 70 contacts there for people who did not want services at all or did not want services when I first spoke with them. The next one is the homeless outreach reports. So every time I do any sort of referral, I take a report. And it's called a homeless, homeless outreach report. So I did 119 reports with 161 subjects. So those are all referrals. Whether it be a detox program, Pinellas Hope, Safe Harbor, St. Vincent de Paul, clothing, all sorts of services that were provided. And then below that is just all the places that I'd referred people to. And then at the bottom is like just the grand total of the activity.
So when you have 119 reports for 161 subjects, is that, because sometimes they're in pairs or groups?
Exactly. Sometimes they're in pairs or sometimes on a, usually on my, my weekend, if I came in on a Tuesday, I'm just returning phone calls for half of my day. And then I'll put them all in one report and just label them individually.
What does a, like a referral to Pinellas Hope, what does that look like? Do you, do you actually take people to Pinellas Hope? Do you give them the directions and how to get there? What's that look like?
Yeah, we, what we do is we'll, we'll give them the address, we'll give them the phone number. We tell them the bus route because buses are free during COVID. And then I send an email to Pinellas Hope with all their information. And after, they have to have some, I guess, like background a little bit before they go there. You cannot be a sexual predator. And you can't have been to jail in the past three months unless you get a negative COVID test because Pinellas Hope's one of the only places that I know of that's been COVID-free this entire time. And they do that by, if you've been to jail in the past three months, then they need a negative COVID test before they'll allow you in. So I sent an email to Pinellas Hope and then just give them how to get there. If they ever say they need some help getting there, then I will, I will assist getting them there. Sometimes we, we had to pick some elderly female up because she had a bunch of belongings and bring her down there. But it's very rare. Usually people know how to get around because they, they ride the buses frequently and stuff like that. But that's usually how the referral goes to Pinellas Hope. So detox program, I drive them because my thing with detoxing, if somebody wants to get help right now, if, if you say, okay, well, I'll get you in tomorrow or whatever, it's not going to happen. So I drive them immediately to a detox program. Like that's, I don't, I don't ask any questions. All right, get in the car, let's go. I'll get you up there.
For, for Pinellas, Pinellas Hope, is there any follow-up on how many of the referrals actually get in? And because Pinellas Hope is a great program.
It is. It's a fantastic program.
Right.
Good question. And I actually, I've reached out to them before I came to this to get a follow-up on all the people that are there.
We rehearsed this earlier.
So. So out of the 100 and, what is it, 120 that I referred to Pinellas Hope, 43 actually went. 29 are still there, 10 unsuccessfully discharged and four successfully discharged. And then I asked them, what's a successful discharge mean? And it's, it's when they complete their time at Pinellas Hope, they enter into some sort of permanent destination or long-term housing.
And then 29 are still there.
29 are still there.
I have to work out the percentages and 40-some didn't make it, right?
Yes.
It is, it's an outstanding program.
It is. And that's, it's the, everybody that I made contact with that's experiencing street homelessness, I used to offer Safe Harbor and Pinellas Hope. Now I've just leaned to Pinellas Hope because 99% of them say they don't want anything to do with Safe Harbor unfortunately, for whatever their reasons are.
Because have they been there?
A lot of them have been there or heard about it or, it's, it's a different answer from every person. But the, just the overwhelming majority just didn't like it.
Pinellas Hope is very strict too. So the people that don't make it are not ready yet.
Yeah, exactly.
Because they're.
They're going to put you on a path towards.
Exactly.
Recovery or permanent housing, you know, if you want to do it. Safe Harbor doesn't have that kind of.
And you have to be doing either, you know, going, trying to get a job or, or schooling or something like that. You have to be doing something like that for them to even allow you to stay there.
You've got to be willing to take that long walk down to the bus stop.
So unsuccessful at Pinellas Hope could be a rule violation, like they show up intoxicated. It could also be that they're just not ready to follow the steps necessary.
Or just leave.
Or they just walk out.
They disappear, yeah. That would be a great experience to go serve some meals. And I've done that a couple of times. I don't want to get all preachy and all that, but I've, I've served supper there a couple of times at Pinellas Hope. And that's, that's an education. You want to walk out with a lot of gratitude.
On that dashboard shows you the entrances, exits and why they left or left and there's no.
Is that admission criteria or acceptance criteria at Pinellas Hope? You said they, they can't go there without a positive, without a negative COVID test if they've been in jail.
In the past three months.
And would that also apply to people coming from Safe Harbor?
It does not Safe Harbor anymore. It was Safe Harbor as well. It was Safe Harbor or jail. I guess Safe Harbor's been COVID-free pretty recently, so they, they don't, they took off that restriction. Any other questions on that slide? Well, this, this slide is a, we did a, well, we didn't do it, but the library hosted a showered and empowered event, which was a, it's a mobile giant, looks like a food truck kind of, kind of thing. And they have washers and dryers and two showers. So people experiencing street homelessness, if they need to get a shower, do their laundry, they can go to, go to this showered and empowered bus and they can do their laundry for their, there for free. And it's, it was a good place to make some contacts with some local people experiencing street homelessness and stuff like that. It was a great event.
Yeah, it garnered that, that positive local news coverage that was, that really got out some of the word about, you know, launching of the, of the homeless outreach initiative. You know, you were interviewed on there. I got, I got your, your mug there on the Fox 13 news. But, but Chad, it was, it was definitely a, a positive event. And I know Jerry Remming and, and Arrow mentioned that the, they're on their Largo Library Facebook, they got lots of positive feedback about the event and things like that. So we wanted to share that as a success story.
And these are, I'm just going to give you a couple of success stories. I guess you, you know, my interpretation of a success story is of people that I have come across. This first one, I had, he was a veteran, a Vietnam veteran. He, I'd been dealing with him my entire 10-year career in Largo. We've probably had hundreds of calls for service for him. And when I first got this position, I was like, I want to make contact with him to see if I can do something for this guy because we've just had so many issues with him over the years with, he was an alcoholic and all sorts of medical issues. So it was really weird because the first time I went out with him and I, I, I spoke with him and he's like, yeah, I'm ready to go. I'm ready to get off the street. And I was like, wow, okay. That was a little, a little bit easier than I expected. But after talking to him a couple of times, I had to set up a couple of meetings. We had to meet out, meet with him. And then we reached out to Bay Pines. They had to give us to St. Vincent de Paul. They had to have a, an interview over the phone with him. And they finally got him to some temporary housing, which was a motel in Largo. And now he's, we, we kept in contact for a while and then he left that motel and he was now in some permanent housing down in St. Pete somewhere. I haven't been able to speak with him because he doesn't have a phone, so, which is a little bit unfortunate. But that was a very big success for me, dealing with him for my entire career and finally getting him into some permanent housing now.
How long ago was that?
I'd say right at the beginning. So June-ish is when I first made contact with him.
Six months.
Yeah. Okay, this, this was a, I made contact with a gentleman that was a, he was panhandling on 19 and East Bay. I'd spoken with him there. He told me he had some alcohol addiction problems. He said he wasn't ready to get services. We gave him a business card with our information on it. Probably like a week later, we found him again. He was drinking behind Wawa in the ditch area. I said, are you ready now? And he said, yeah, I'm ready now. He's like, I'll go to a detox program. So I drove him right up to a detox program. He did the, the 14-day medical detox, went into transitional housing for 90 days. He finished the whole thing. And the last time we spoke with him, he was trying to get a job and going to some permanent housing. This couple, we had dealt with, not dealt with, we'd, we'd spoken with multiple times at the library, at the park. We tried to offer them services multiple times. They, you know, they didn't, they weren't ready for it or they said they had things that they were trying to work out with their family members. At one point, they said that some family members would accept them up north if we could get them a bus ride. So we tried to facilitate that. The, that ended up falling through. The people up north did not want them coming up there unfortunately. After meeting them with them probably two or three more times, we ultimately finally got them to accept help and go to Pinellas Hope, which they are currently still there. Wait, I got one more.
Yeah.
There was one more success story. I actually got, there was, I guess it was a call for service about a welfare check. It was on Indian Rocks Road, right in front of Largo Med. Officer Justice reached out to us. He was with a 79-year-old homeless elderly gentleman. He said he became homeless. He said he became homeless two months ago after being evicted. He ran out of money and he had no idea about any homeless services or anything. He had no idea about anything that was available to help him out. I was able to, we have a good working relationship with Pinellas Hope, so I was able to get ahold of, um, the, the director of Pinellas Hope. And they only have intakes on Wednesdays and Thursdays at Pinellas Hope. I think this was like a, I don't know, Friday or something like that or Thursday. Um, she said, yes, we, we can get him in right now, get him in tomorrow morning and we, we got him into a hotel room with assistance of Officer Quattlebaum, who's the elderly, elderly services officer. So with the assistance of him, we ended up getting him into a motel room for the night and then we got him into Pinellas Hope first thing in the morning. They, they kind of went out of their way to help us out a little bit on this situation because a seventy-nine-year-old should not be living out on the street by themselves, homeless. And that was the, that was last one.
I think the one, the one theme behind all those, all those, uh, success stories is that you're having to make multiple contacts.
I, I am, and that's what, getting into this, you know, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't really know what to expect, honestly, I had no idea. But you do definitely have to make multiple co- multiple contacts with people to build up that trust and rapport with them because, you know, they're, police officers approaching them and saying, you know, my first, when I approach people initially, they're usually like, oh, I'm leaving, I'm doing, I didn't do anything wrong. I'm like, no, it's not, it's not a problem, I'm here to help you. What can I do to help you? I'm a homeless outreach officer. And they're like, oh, I've heard about you or whatever. And that changes everything around. But yes, you do have to make multiple contacts with people and the majority of people experiencing homelessness that I've seen, they all do want some sort of assistance, whether they want it now or they want to think about it or something like that. It's been an overwhelming majority, people that are, it's positive out there.
All right, and then, uh, uh, following up on, on what's next for the homeless task team, we're going to continue our data collection and analysis of the homeless activity tracker. Uh, we're going to continue to update the, uh, Fire Department Medical Response Protocols to incorporate this, uh, the new homeless activity tracker. In February, we're going to provide the, uh, the homeless policy group with some additional data and some, uh, preliminary, uh, service delivery cost analysis, uh, any, uh, policy or staffing recommendations that the homeless task team, uh, uh, agrees upon and, uh, uh, wants to, to, to give to the, uh, policy group. And then our high utilizer analysis recommendations for the new, uh, Largo Police Department Crime Analyst. And then, uh, for the city commission, uh, Mr. Schubert, did you want to add anything for the, for the commission regarding the upcoming, uh, commission retreat?
Yeah, we're just going to be, um, engaging more of a discussion at, at, at the city commission retreat in February on the issue of our, our homelessness and how we deal with that in the community, also our mental outreach programs as well. So, so we'll, we'll get into a little more detail on it then to, to get more direction from the commission. And then of course, you know, the mayor sent out a, a letter to, uh, several, hopefully, partners in, in, in the mid-Pinellas area that we need to work with to, to, to look at homelessness. Uh, you know, a big part of that is obviously Safe Harbor, but, but even, even bigger than that. And, um, so far, I think we've gotten responses from the sheriff and from the county administrator. I don't know if we've gotten any others yet, but, uh, we, we'll, we'll need to reach out again, maybe to some of those other folks to see if they're, they're interested in engaging us. But this is obviously an issue we need to work as a city, within our city on these issues, but it's obviously a bigger issue than just the city of Largo. So if we could regionalize it, that, that's also a very positive.
Mayor, your response, do you got a response from the sheriff?
Yeah, it was, it was mostly just wanting to sit down and talk a little bit about, um, and, and we're, I reached, I sent them a, an email right back. I haven't heard from him, but, you know, I asked Gloria today to reach out to his staff to kind of set up a, a meeting that we can meet either in person or just him and I on, on Zoom, um, to talk about what we're talking about here. And, and if y'all read the letter, it's basically, um, we have, we, meaning us, Pinellas Park, St. Pete, the county, all have pretty grand plans for the gateway. And yet, um, the county brings four hundred homeless folks to Safe Harbor, which, which my understanding is Safe Harbor isn't helping a whole lot of folks get on that path to not being homeless anymore. Um, and so it's, it's, you know, it's going to be tough to inspire commercial and business and residential development in an area, in an area that has a, a growing and persistent and consistent homeless, homelessness problem. Um, so I, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to have real conversations about how we can fix that.
Well, I think that's fantastic. And you know, we talked about it during the gateway and the whole tri-city discussion about building public spaces and parks. We talked about things out in the High Point area, um, without having the discussion or just ignoring the fact that we might, we might have a problem, we might create a problem. So I think it's great to have that discussion and to note the difference in the success stories between Pinellas Hope and Safe Harbor.
I think it's pretty telling that, that somebody that, you know, the folks that are really out there helping homeless people send a hundred and twenty to Pinellas Hope and eight to Safe Harbor, um, it tells, tells me a pretty good story.
Yeah, so I, I hope, and I'm confident that that discussion is be quite candid and, and, uh, you know, I don't necessarily want to hear the, the marketing version of what goes on at Safe Harbor. So, yeah, I think it's a great idea that you did that.
What, what is the rolling daily occupancy at Safe Harbor? I think it is getting, it's like three to four hundred, but I'm not sure.
I think they have four hundred.
Yeah, four hundred is the number that I've heard. Four oh seven, I think, is their capacity, but when they're.
Yeah, they're, they are completely different programs from, you know, just two completely different, but you want to wonder about, well, the, the population that you're serving and then what's the ROI on, on the money that you're putting into this, you know? So, but you, if you're going to, if you're going to Pinellas Hope, you gotta really want to change your life. A lot of people go to Safe Harbor, they just want a dry place for the night.
Well, not, not only that, Commissioner, but also Safe Harbor is a, is a incarceration, is a diversion from the jail.
Oh, yeah.
They take them out of jail and drop them.
They don't, they don't necessarily want to go to Safe Harbor, that's where they go.
They take them there and give them a bus pass and.
Yeah, they're all supposed to go back down to St. Pete.
Not to, not to beat up on Safe Harbor too much, but I, I appreciate the type of information you put together.
They need, they need serious counseling services there, which they just don't have right now.
I'll also mention that when I first started working here, I, I think it was pretty much the same few people experiencing homelessness that you would deal with all the time. Now it's new people every day, I don't, I don't know any of them.
Because they're being brought here from, from South County and dropped off at Safe Harbor. I had a question about, um, I, I, um, saw the, um, the news story that featured you and, uh, and was, was great. And, um, and you mentioned that it was a, a really nice opportunity to get, to talk to some people and to get some people connected with services. Um, have, have, do you partner with churches that do food pantries and, you know, different events? Um, there's a food pantry that's on, I think it's on Wednesday and Saturday mornings in downtown.
Liberty Worship Center.
Yeah, and, and, um, and they, I'm, I'm certain, I mean, I see, I see homeless folks in downtown on Wednesday morning. Um, and I usually don't see them other than Wednesday morning because I know that, that they're getting food. Um, and, and just a sidebar, uh, we're doing a food drive for the food pantry, um, at the Largo Christmas parade, which I'll tell you later. Um, but, uh, so if you don't work, I'm also not there. But, but they're helping a lot of people and I think that, that one might be a good partnership if, you know, if they're willing, everybody's willing.
Yeah, we, uh, Debbie has our information, so she has people that she knows that want any services. She, she reaches out to us or has them reach out to us. And they also have a halfway house that we have referred, uh, I think one or two people to.
Oh, you're going to have questions, go ahead.
My, more is my comment. I think what you guys are doing is very, very good. But also, I think, I get some citizens that don't perception, they get the perception they see it and they don't think we're doing anything. So I'm curious if you presented here in like that article, the, 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 you'd see action news or something like that? Putting something together where it can get out to our residents or we'll Facebook post or the city manager puts out his newsletter so our citizens can see what y'all are doing and the success stories, but also a way to connect them with y'all so they know exactly kind of, this isn't just a team sitting around talking numbers. I think sometimes that's what the government does and I hear this and I try to explain it to them, they don't see.
Yeah.
So I, I think doing something like that, getting the word out better through some social media or putting y'all in the video or talking about it in the success story and seeing someone else after, I think would help.
That's a great idea. Awesome. I'll get with, uh, Quattle, Officer Quattlebaum and stuff, I think he does a lot of that and, and, uh, Officer Tran, I think they both do a lot of media.
Those are new movie stars, aren't they?
I'll get with them and see if we can figure something out.
But thank you for giving that.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Similar actually to what you were going to say, I was going to say thank you for all the work that you're putting into it as, you know, the whole work group and also so to thank everybody else who's on the team. And also thank you for being out there and sharing these success stories with us and, and even those that you say, you know, maybe we don't know the, the whole outcome. Um, because your approach, as you said, and your willingness to kind of change gears from what the standard was before, as you say, kind of knew your new role also, uh, shows just how much, how much our city cares, how much value we place on everyone and ensuring that everyone in the community, um, is, is safe and, and at least has an opportunity to know what's available to them. And if, the only way I think to do what, what you're, what the team is doing as well as what you're doing in the field is, is because you care. And I, I think that's awesome that we have that reflected amongst so many of our, so many people that work here. But also just to, you can tell when you guys are talking about it, how much passion you have for, for what you're doing. And I just really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hearing that, so thank you.
Hey, I, whenever we talk about, um, this program and programs like it, I, it reminds me of a story that I heard, um, on the EMS advisory board a couple of years ago from Treasure Island, um, which is a much smaller city than ours, but their, twenty percent of their police in the EMS calls were for one homeless guy. And, and that had been going on for a few years. And the police chief said, let's see if we can get this guy some help. And, and they, they, they got him on the path and got him, that guy now lives in a house and, and has a job. And, and, and they've reduced their service by twenty perc- their service, call, call for service by twenty percent just by looking at things a little bit different and helping the guy. Um, so, so thank you for everything that you, you do and, and.
Did they cut the budget?
Nope.
The city manager probably wanted to. Yeah, they updated their fleet.
Quick question. So first of all, thank you guys for, you know, everything that you're doing, the, the task team as well as, as you guys out in the field. It's, it's fantastic. I'm extremely happy to see it and I, and I know that, um, you know, it's going to make some big difference in, in, in the services that we are able to provide for, for the homeless in Largo. Kind of to add on to Commissioner Smith's question as far as the, the residents in Largo and, and, you know, they, they might not, you know, they see homeless and, and are kind of questioning, what do we do? How do we, you know, what do we do to help get these folks outside, you know, and some, some, some help? And, um, so for them, what's the best way for them to reach out to, to, and figure out, you know, what they can do? Is it to go to the website? Is it to?
Yeah, if you go to the, the Largo, the city of Largo website, it has our email address on there and I check my emails, I mean, all day, every day. So I do that and, uh, I mean, a phone call either, either or, I mean. And when I do get referrals from citizens, I make it a point to reach out to them after I had attempted to either make contact with somebody or something like that because I don't, I don't want them to think, well, I just sent an email and nobody responded or nobody did anything and that's the end of it. So I, I go out of my way to make sure that they know that I actually either attempted to make contact with someone or did and what the outcome was. I actually had that last week, there's a couple that hangs out in front of Gold's Gym at Keene Plaza. And I'd gotten a couple of calls about them. So I went out, tried to reach out to them one time. They said they didn't want any services. We provided them, we actually got them a pair of shoes, one of the, the gentleman that was there, we got him a pair of shoes, uh, gave him our card, told him this is what we can offer you. Got another call from another citizen probably like a month later, about the same couple. So I had went out, I'd went out there again and I, you know, I tried to offer them services again. They still said they weren't, they didn't really want any, but they may, may want a bus ride up to another state or something. So we provided them the information on how to do that. And then I co- I contacted the citizen, they called me and I told them exactly what happened. I'd already reached out, you know, I kind of explained the whole situation to them just so they feel they understand what I did and everything like that.
I think that, that follow-up is probably the most important part of the whole thing because I've, I've actually had a couple of people reach out to me recently about, you know, they're, they're seeing some more homelessness in the city of Largo and, and what to do. And I've, I've directed them to the, to the, to the, to the website and I know that the email address is on there, um.
And that goes to me and Ryan, my partner from directions for lending, so it goes to both of us.
And I, you know, in a couple, well, at least one situation, I know that they had said that, you know, prior, previously, they, they had had some interactions with maybe the PD or whoever and, and there really wasn't any follow-ups. So I think that, that piece of it right there, as far as the residents go, to know that, hey, obviously it's not something that we're going to solve tomorrow by no means, right? But, but knowing that we're out there trying to do something and that we are trying to help provide services to the, to the folks who are needing it. And then also following back up with the residents in the city of Largo, I think that's great because they, they really want to know what's going on and, and know that their call didn't just, or their email didn't just go to some blank email inbox somewhere. So that's fantastic.
And I'll, I'll be honest, when, when it's a more broad thing, like a patrol check or something like that, that people are seeing homelessness, you know, on the side of business, that's a little more complicated, but if it's like a specific person or location, then, then I'm, I'm always right on top of it and I reach out to them after immediately.
Do you think that's something that the new spider software might help with? To, to respond to something like that? To get information back?
What's your question to the IT guy, he's not here?
Let's call him. I have one final question and, and in your contacts, you know, over the last six months and you come across people, is, is domestic violence, uh, does it come up as a factor in some of this homelessness? Have you come across cases like that?
I'll be honest, very rarely. Very rarely. We ask a lot of the times and it's always, the answer's ninety-nine percent of the time, no. But that's again, you know, people sometimes don't want to be honest with me about stuff, especially if they want to protect the other person or whatever it may be, but a lot of times people don't want to be honest with me. It's hard enough getting people to admit that they have a drug or alcohol problem when I'm asking them questions.
Right. Can, can we have you come back in, you know, six, nine months and, and, you know, kind of just see how things are going then at that point? I mean, I, because I think, you know, like you said, you've only been going for six months now, right? So, or as far as you being out in the field and, and, um, multiple contacts is needed for a lot of the folks, right? So I think, you know, maybe we can, you, I think we'll obviously start seeing a lot more improvement or, or change six, nine months out here from now. So once you've been able to start having a, you know, a little bit more time in the field.
I'll tell you, I'm already having a difficult time finding people experiencing homeless people a lot of the times because I don't know if they know where I'm coming or when I'm coming and they sometimes they're like, I don't want to talk to him. He might ask me too many questions or whatever. So I mean, I'm already seeing a change now just driving around. It's, it's hard, especially out at the Wawa, Cheddar's Walmart area, that place was, there was people experiencing homelessness there every day and now I can't find anybody.
Really?
So, sometimes I'm having...
I'll talk to Henry about this tomorrow, but I've had some property owners out there contact me regarding that area and the PSTA transportation and all that. So, I'm sure we'll be in touch about that. But if that's good though, if, you know, maybe that situation is changing because of your efforts out there. So, great.
I think that shows the benefit of the activity reporter that we're working on is if city employees, you know, public work staff, park staff, people who are around the city, if they, you know, they can be extra sets of eyes to be able to get those kind of real-time reports to Officer Steiner and Ryan to be able to get the information to them so they can make that connection.
The only problem I've seen with that is I don't work 24 hours a day and a lot of those are coming at nighttime and stuff. So, they're telling me about one person that's out of business and by the time I get there, they're long gone.
12 hours, like.
In the future with COVID becoming, you know, evictions are happening, so are you looking at also finding out if that's a direct resource, I mean, cause of why they're homeless?
I've had a few people say it was because of COVID and being evicted and stuff like that already. So, I'm sure that's probably gonna uptick here in the near future.
I'd be interested in what Vice Mayor Robinson said in the future, just coming back and seeing the change of, you know, we're gonna be seeing a flood unfortunately of that, I've heard. So, I'd like to know how that's being addressed a little bit or if you're hitting it and it's, they're actually saying that's the cause.
A lot of, like I said, some people are saying that's the cause. I mean, I don't really know how to get out to people who are, there's gotta be some sort of way that I can make contact with people who are close to eviction or something like that. And I don't know, I don't know if you guys know of any way to find these people out and then that would help.
Thank you very much.
Great job, man.
Great job.
Thank you for what you're doing.
Next up, we will hear about the Police Department's Strategic Plan.
Okay. Mayor saw you guys coming, so he gave it to me.
Jimmy got the gum.
Got it. I got it. Saying you're overtime?
Sorry. All right, I'm not gonna lie, I'm a little intimidated coming in after that presentation. I'm not sure I can top that.
So, Merity in a few minutes is gonna queue up a short 55-minute video. You'll watch it while I have some questions after that.
And then 37 slides behind it.
Well, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna be doing just a quick intro of the Police Department's Strategic Plan and kind of how we got to the place we're at today. This originally started well over a year ago now, when the city did their survey, citywide survey. City manager put out a special invitation to the Police Department folks because there was some concerns and some issues that were kind of festering on around there. We wanted to get a deeper dive and a closer look at what we can do to make things better at the Police Department. So, fast forward a little bit. We get the results from the survey. We dig through some of that stuff, get some input and digest it. And then Merity thankfully reached out to me and offered a partnership with OPB to start brainstorming on ways that we can kind of address some of the things that came up in that survey and provide a better, more usable document as a strategic plan. So, as Commissioner Carroll knows, historically, our Strategic Plan has been a document that's created by the chief, the deputy chief, and a couple of majors. And the value I don't think is really there as far as the buy-in from the employees at the other levels. The answer to the question of why are we doing some of these things? Well, excuse me, well, we just thought it was something good that we oughta be doing or it's something that we can easily document and track and count. But the folks on the street that were doing the work, it really didn't have the same effect. So, it wasn't meaningful for them to realize this. For example, an east side officer working, you know, the east side of town may have a whole set of circumstances and issues that he needs help with. And then we're telling him to go focus on law, tall grass. And he's like, "Well, I have a set of problems over here that I need help with." So, this was our plan to move forward to identify what is important to the employees at all levels. And then how can we put a plan in place that's gonna address those things and move the agency forward? So, Merity and her staff thankfully got over 100, and I don't wanna steal too much of her thunder, but surprisingly and very excited on my part was over 150 employees participated in engagement meetings that Merity and her staff hosted. So, that's pretty amazing in and of itself. It just shows that the engagement level of all the employees of that department wanted to participate and had something that they wanted to share or had some concerns that they wanted to express. So, we wanted to hear all that stuff, good, bad, and ugly. We were ready to hear all that stuff so we could put together a plan that's gonna move the agency into a better place and also provide better direction for the years to come, you know? So, instead of just trying to pick easy things, some of the things are complicated and will take multiple years to put together. So, I think it's a great document. I'm proud of it. I'm proud of all the employees and the staff and Merity's staff that participated in this program. I probably did the least, this is probably the most amount of work that I've done with Strategic Plan right here, right now. Most of the work came from staff. And so, they should really be complimented on the hard work and dedication and really depth of what they thought about to make this a real quality plan for the agency. So...
That's perfect. Thank you.
I will segue out. I will bring Officer Bowers. He's my new accreditation manager, not new to police work. He's got over 30 years in law enforcement. But he was also a team member and very instrumental in keeping this thing moving forward and very positive for promoting it through the agency. So, I'll be next door watching and I can come back to wrap up if needed. Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Well, good evening, everyone. It is such a pleasure to be with you here this evening to deliver the Police Department Strategic Plan. As the chief said, we've been working on this for about 15 months now. And as you know, the circumstances over the last year have been anything but normal. So, I'm so impressed with the team that we've been able to produce such a high-quality project and especially with all the curveballs 2020 has thrown us. So, you know, I think the police, along with the city, but the Police Department, you know, reverted into digital meetings. So, a lot of the strategy mapping and all these things that we do to produce this all had to be done virtually. So, that was a huge adjustment for everyone. So, I'm really proud of the product and thank you to the whole team. Officer Bowers is here with me tonight. He's one of the nine members that was on the Police Department Strategic Plan Project Team, which was made up of both sworn and civilian employees. And our plan tonight is to walk you through our process and give you an overview of the new Strategic Plan, which was also attached in your agenda. So, first of all, the process. I'm highlighting this because it's so important and it's aligned with our new High Performance Organization or HPO strategies. Building off the chief's comments, we began the initial conversations during the summer and developed the project plan for rollout in early fall of 2019. As the chief mentioned, we had about 150 employees out of the 200 that currently work in the Police Department. And we asked all of the participants the same set of questions, which consisted of things like, "Describe your ideal law enforcement agency. How can we work together to focus on common goals? What should we be doing differently five years from now? What changes have we seen in our community and how is that impacting the delivery of police services? And how can we strengthen the relationship with other departments in the city to better solve problems?" That's just a sample of the questions that we asked everyone in the department. And we had really great critical thinking and really great feedback that you'll see help design the Strategic Plan. So, from all of that, many common themes emerged. And the OPB worked, the OPB team worked with the project team to further categorize all the feedback that we received and align it under the framework of the city's existing Strategic Plan. So, through that vetting and prioritization process of all of the feedback, we were successful in producing the first Strategic Plan that's aligned with the city's overall Strategic Plan. So, congratulations to the Police Department on that. Many other departments have Strategic Plans, but they've not yet redone them to align with the city's Strategic Plan. So, this was an exciting first step for the Police Department. So, without too much further introduction, we'll jump into the plan. We have our presentation lined out here. So, we'll share with you what the employees shared with us. And then Earl will talk about a very high-level overview of what's contained in the plan. So, first of all, we'd like to start with purpose. We always start with why. That's a big tenet of strategic planning and High Performance Organization. You think about planning a vacation. If you don't know where you're going, you don't know your vision, your destination, how are you really gonna get there? So, we talk about why, starting with, you know, being clear on the feedback that we heard that there wasn't a clear vision currently for the Police Department. And it was time to reevaluate the mission statement as well. So, currently, the "Serve and Protect" is something you see commonly in police departments, but it's also too generic. And there were a lot of things that the employees felt that we could add to the mission statement to make it a little bit more Largo-specific and reflect the agency's values. We also heard that it would be nice to clearly define employee expectations and what it means to deliver superior services at the Police Department. So, we looked at the city's values for an opportunity for alignment there as well. So, I'm gonna turn it to Earl and he's gonna go over the brand-new mission and vision statement for the Police Department.
Good evening. So, when we started this process, the department had a mission statement, but we did not have a vision. And we asked ourselves, "What is it that we do? How do we act and how do we view ourselves?" So, these questions were answered in our new vision and mission statements. Our vision is how we view ourselves in the future and our mission is a statement that provides clarity. So, our vision statement, new vision statement, is that the Largo Police Department will be the agency of choice through strategic policing, strong community relationships, and empowering leaderships at all levels. And our mission statement is that it is the mission of the Largo Police Department to uphold the law with integrity and honor by protecting life and property, reducing crime, and sustaining strong community partnerships.
And one of the things I do wanna point out about the vision statement is that there was a lot of intention behind it in aligning with the city's vision to be the community of choice. So, wanting our employees to work for Largo PD to be the agency of choice was something that was very intentional in the vision statement as well.
Okay, so, our values were to be in alignment with the city's values of integrity, collaboration, passion, and creativity. So, as a group, we all sat down and we looked at these values individually and we asked ourselves, "What does each one of these mean to us?" So, basically, integrity looks like this. Serving the public with honesty and transparency and according to ethical standards, respecting the worth of others and doing what is right. Now, to that end, honesty in all actions and communications, both internal and external, and ensuring fair and equal treatment of all people sworn civilian and citizen. As a police officer, these with the City of Largo for the past seven years, I just wanna say that I've had a very high sense of support from the community. I have been, over the past several years, constantly approached by citizens thanking me for my service and I've seen them do that for others. And so, to me, that speaks of a unique trust with the community. And so, that's not something that we want to lose. That's a very high-value trust. So, integrity, those points go to that. When we talk about collaboration, communication and engagement and teamwork that is inclusive of our internal and external partners, basically all we're saying is that everyone has a stake in the process and that the sum of individual contributions leads to great shared community results. And that's what this plan is showing. Now, in regards to passion, this is who we are and this is why we chose our field of law enforcement, why we do police work. Approaching the job with devotion, enthusiasm, and curiosity, caring about results, and enjoying our work. To me, the main points were, that spoke to me, were caring about helping other people, being a team player and practice helping others, and instilling passion in others and inspiring them. In regards to creativity, when we say that, innovative thinking that solves problems and improves service delivery. So, with that, we are embracing the High Performance Organization principles and ideas from everyone. That's a very big, big statement for us.
Thank you, Earl. I think we're gonna see a lot of creativity and embracing HBO as we move on. So, like I mentioned, this is the first plan to be in alignment with the city's Strategic Plan. So, you're going to see the different focus areas broadly represented in color. So, sustainability and public safety, public health and safety are what's represented in the Police Department Strategic Plan. So, it is aligned with that. So, our first piece that we look at in terms of how the organization operates and how the Police Department operates is really that culture and leadership bucket. So, we heard a lot of really great things about the Police Department, that they are very proud to be ethical and professional. They value the family-style culture and they really do value the culture of excellence that's been developed as a result of accreditation and really reaching that excelsior level. And employees are really proud and feel like they do make a difference in the community. So, those are all positive attributes that the plan works to build off of and improve. And then, of course, there's always opportunities for improvement. So, just overall, that organizational excellence piece in the city's Strategic Plan is represented here. Where we talk about being open to change and innovation, being more proactive versus reactive. Communication is a common theme throughout all levels of the plan, which I'm sure you saw when you read it. You know, a lot of times things happen and we forget to tell people about it. So, making sure we're celebrating success and being intentional about the way we communicate things and focusing on strategy and goals. So, those are some of the things we heard from the employees during those meetings. And that builds us with our first agency initiative of culture.
So, in regarding agency culture, our goal is to build a family-style culture that values innovation, inclusion, and effective communication. So, to do this, one of the things that we're looking to do is have an improvement in department communications and read-offs. So, to that end, we already have a High Performance Project Team that is working on creating a better read-off for our officers. This is so that management can communicate more effectively with the officers who work many different shifts with more than just emails and attendance at occasional read-offs. Under agency leadership, we have three goals, or several goals. The first is to demonstrate active leadership among all employees. So, one of the things that's going to be done to that end is career development programs. This is good for both sworn officers and civilian staff and it builds confidence by the community. A better-trained staff will do better out on the road and help people with their various problems. This next goal is to create the framework for innovative ideas to be heard and implemented. Again, this is the HBO idea coming to life, okay? Employees do the research on problems that they have identified and they come up with solutions to those problems. They present those problems and solutions to management. And then if it's a viable solution, then management is agreeing to implement those changes. Another goal is to provide opportunities for all employees to continuously improve operations and services to the community. So, to that end, capacity building for continuous improvement skills and process improvement. Again, HBO identifies the problem and provides an opportunity for innovation and solutions.
Some other areas of improvement, which I think will eventually result in different things you see changing within the Police Department over the next several years, is really related to how the organization is operating. So, again, you see some of the communication things there. You see policy modernization, all things we're seeing citywide. Embracing alternatives for scheduling and staffing, better team-building initiatives, and being open to change and innovation to just foster that agency excellence piece a little bit more. But also things you saw represented in our previous agenda item like data-informed decision-making. That's really gonna blossom with the crime analyst position that's being added this year. Really more transparency throughout all agency processes and having people dedicated within the Police Department with those skills to be able to do process improvement and not have to rely solely on just opposite-performance budget or other areas in this, you know, IT for that to build some of those skills within the employees in the Police Department as well. So, some of the things that we see, that you may see in the future as a result of this, you know, there was a lot of staffing shortages or issues that were brought up from employees during these meetings. Everything from crime scene processing, backlogs, and property and evidence. You saw, of course, the crime analysis issue, which we funded in the FY21 budget. Capacity for detectives to perform work, administrative support, and just overall modernizing processes. You know, we can go on and many of these issues are addressed in the plan. But it's really taking that broad perspective look, particularly through the use of data analysis, to understand what's not working and how can we better solve the problems, either through changing operations, software systems, processes, or, you know, maybe in the end adding people as well. Turn it over to Earl.
So, another goal under agency management is to establish frameworks for consistent, ongoing communication throughout the department to keep employees informed and engaged. A specific tactic to this would be modern tools for communication and employee engagement. So, one of the things that's already going to this end is that Chief Undstedt, on a regular basis, has webinars department-wide where he talks about things that are going on within the agency, problems that we're looking to solve, both external and internal. So, what I mean by internal would be issues that employees may have brought up. For instance, an outer vest issue or something along that line, or the tattooing, that sort of thing. Outside department issues might be the homeless issue that we've been dealing with for years. Another goal is to incorporate data and transparency into key agency... Another goal is to incorporate data and transparency into key agency decision-making. So this is very important. We're talking about data-based staffing analysis. So we need to have an opportunity to be able to evaluate data. It speaks back to just what we've already heard, and with that, we'll use that to evaluate staffing-level needs, and the plan speaks to that.
Okay, so some other things we heard from employees regarding training and our training program. So currently, of course, there's staffing issue there. There's insufficient time to actually engage in the level of training that employees are looking for. So, you know, the plan does speak to the training program. And then we also did talk a lot about tools and equipment. Some of the tools and equipment are outdated, and it seems like the refresh cycle on things, just like technology starts speeding up and speeding up, and then next thing you know, it's not clear whether or not you have the right equipment that you need. So the plan does work to address some of those issues, which Earl will briefly go over here.
So under training tools and equipment, the first goal is to provide opportunities for training that keeps the agency on the forefront of policing best practices. So as a tactic, we're going to evaluate and redevelop the agency's training program. To that end, a training officer position was authorized by Chief Undsted, and we just selected Officer Steele Nardozzi to run and manage that program, and he'll be coming onboard within the next few weeks. The other goal is to provide necessary tools and equipment to ensure employees can conduct their work safely, effectively, and efficiently. So what we're talking about is basically proactive planning for equipment, making sure that we have the proper equipment, and that it's the right equipment for future needs.
Okay, recruitment and retention was similar to the training issue, so, you know, not only do we need good tools and equipment and training, but our employees, you know, none of that is worthwhile if we don't have the right employees here with us. So, you know, we did hear a lot from particularly officers that diversity is something that we'd like to see more within the officers. I do want to note that currently, we do match our community in terms of makeup of our officers, but what we're really talking about is being able to serve the community that we interact with the most. So, you know, if we're not interacting mostly with, you know, white or English-speaking individuals, we need our officers to reflect that as well. It's better service delivery to the community, and then also in our telecommunicator staff. So making sure that we have the appropriate recruitment levels that we're actually attracting and retaining people, but also the right people that meets our community needs. And the other side of this is also employee health and wellness. So this was probably one of the most profound outcomes of the employee engagement meetings: the need for better mental health care resources for our employees. The traditional EAP is not a solution for public safety, EAP being the Employee Assistance Program, and this also includes our telecommunicators. And they really identified that a better approach was needed. On this note, as well related to health and wellness, rethinking our uniforms. You know, it's only getting hotter outside, so maybe approaching what we allow our people to wear out in the streets is something different, maybe different fabrics, or maybe there's different ways to have load-bearing, like Earl was saying, load-bearing vests that are different, so that we can have better health outcomes for our employees.
So on the initiative of employee recruitment and retention, the goal is to recruit and retain superior employees that create capacity to advance the agency's vision and mission. One way of doing that is to attract a high-quality and diverse candidate pool. Now, to that end, the recent new PBA contract is already attracting higher-quality candidates for employment. We have a group that, of seven, that's going to be looked at to be hired in February. In regarding to employee health and wellness, the goal is to support the physical and mental well-being of all employees, and a comprehensive mental health program for both sworn and civilian is being created. That's being led by Lieutenant LaMonaco. She's creating our peer support program, and she's been doing a tremendous job with that. Basically, that program is going to provide employees and their families the ability to seek help due to the stresses of police work. And I just wanted to add, in regards to uniforms, I once weighed my duty belt with all the equipment on it, and it weighs 32 pounds. So that is what the average officer is carrying. If they carry everything that's issued to them, it's 32 pounds of weight on their waist.
Thank you, Earl. Getting close to the end here with technology, so I think it's not a surprise to anyone that technology is, you know, really something that we need to focus on as an organization. What we heard from our police employees is that interoperability, data sharing, and access to, you know, countywide information is really helpful. There has been issues with lack of mobile technology, which we're working to correct. And then, really, you know, we'll speak to more of this in the plan itself, but there's some outdated technology, particularly the police CAD and the police CAD system, computer-aided dispatch system. It's reaching the end of its useful life, as we see it's funded in the CIP. And as a result of that, there are some business processes within the department that are kind of stuck in a previous time when it was acceptable to have more things done on paper and less, you know, automation. So there's really a lot of opportunity before us here with that project when we get there. So, Earl, let's talk about technology briefly.
So effectively, supporting communication and information sharing through seamless and modern technology. So one of the ideas there is to build the PD website and Intranet. So there's a lot of information that can be given to the public and also that can be used internally for employees, such as training schedules and classes that can be put up on the city Intranet, and they can actually look at those items for classes that they can take. And also, in regards to the new CAD and RMS system that will need to be developed within the next few years, the county, excuse me, the city is looking to have a CAD system that would be, that would basically talk with other agencies within the county. That would be a great advantage, because we have a lot of people that come in and out of the City of Largo that we may not know certain information about. They may live in Seminole or some other place, and, well, with that integration, we'll be able to have better data and information sharing for that.
Okay, so then finally, the piece here about the community. So, you know, our previous item highlighted some of these changes, and I'm not going to go through these in depth, but obviously homelessness, density, intensity of redevelopment, increasing annexation, crashes, et cetera, et cetera. These are all changing the way we deliver services across the organization to our community, and the Police Department is no exception. So what we're seeing in terms of employee feedback as a result of these changes is that although the call volume may not be particularly increasing year over year, like we saw in the Fire Department, call concurrency or stacked calls is something that we're experiencing. So it's hard, you know, both telecommunicators and officers say, it's hard to get officers assigned to a call, especially during peak times of the day. The nature of calls are far more violent and require more officers to respond. The inability to solve crime due to lack of detective availability, so as cases become more violent and complex, requires more investigation, which we don't have the capacity for. And all of this really, including that last one, the community desires more training and relations. You think of our Alice or active shooter training, all of those things are more ways the community wants to interact with us in a positive way. And all of that, you know, requires officers to be assigned to it, and then that's the inability for us to really engage in proactive policing, which was one of the main goals of the Public Safety Staffing Plan when it was approved several years ago. Turn it to Earl.
So under the initiative of proactive policing, we have several goals. The first is to utilize intelligence-based predictive policing strategies to proactively solve and prevent community issues. So tactics toward that are building a capacity for data analysis and strategic partnerships, and using data to create a shared sense of responsibility for community problem-solving. So the crime analyst position will speak directly to that, where they can provide critical data to management on issues that are affecting the community.
Can I ask a question about that real quick? So, and just maybe enlighten me a little bit, as far as when we talk about predictive policing strategies using a crime analyst, kind of discuss what your vision of that is, or what the Police Department's vision is of that, compared to, for example, what's happening in Pasco County right now with the issues that they're having and some of the predictive policing that they're using there to essentially harass and, you know, create a lot of issues that probably doesn't need to happen, you know, around the basis of predictive policing?
Well, I think I can answer that. I mean, regarding a crime analyst, I've had the pleasure of working with crime analysts in the past, and as a detective, a crime analyst has been very, very good in helping find patterns in certain types of crimes and criminal activities in the community. So to that end, that's why I'm excited about the crime analyst position, because that can only enhance our activities as far as solving particular types of crimes within certain geographical areas. They can, their whole job is to look at that and provide feedback to us for that, and it's a very good position to have.
And I agree. I mean, I've supported it, was the actual, was the person here on the commission who got it added to the budget. So I completely support the crime analyst position. My concern is, and I briefly addressed this when we were discussing it in the budget, is are you familiar with the situation that's happening in Pasco County?
No, sir.
With the sheriff? And so they're using their crime analysts, they put multiple, obviously, in the county, and using their, what they call predictive policing, to basically go out and find associates of, maybe somebody who has done something before, you know, who might have been in some sort of trouble, and go find all of their known associates and go start hounding on them and finding out, you know, which is way down the line of anything that has to do with anybody that this guy did. So my concern is, and it's not really a concern, I just want to make sure that that's, you know, and discussed that prior to, that we're not going down that path. That's not our intention to go down that path. I don't want to say it's a concern of mine. I know that's not our intention, but I just want to make sure that we're out there and we discuss it. So, you know, as far as like, you know, when you talk about, I know that the PD is having a lot of issues with not being able to get some of the detective work done and needs to get done, and you just discussed that with, you know, not being able to take care of some, solving some of the crimes that they need to, and having that analyst there to be able to look at some of the things that maybe, you know, they're not able to look at. Now, I fully support all of that. That's exactly what I believe the analyst can do, and also, you know, kind of help our officers get to places where they can be a little bit more proactive than reactive, and that's exactly what I want that analyst position to be able to do, not so much, you know, going down to where we're, and I don't know that they would have the capacity to do that anyhow. I mean, you know, when you look at the issue that's going on in Pasco County, it's a whole squad, I guess you would call it, of Pasco Sheriff's Department that is having that issue, and I'm probably not informed enough to be really talking about what their issues are or not, just from what I've read. So anyhow, just wanted to discuss that. You know, when we talk about predictive policing, especially, you know, when people hear that and also are aware of the situation, you know, in Pasco, I just want to clarify that we're not in the same boat.
Yeah, and I would clearly say we're not going to replicate what they're doing in Pasco County.
Hey, you know, what you're talking about is predicting future criminals, attempting to predict future behavior by known offenders and their associates, as opposed to geographical deployment and strategic policing based on crime patterns. You're not looking at individual behavior that way.
They're looking for more time and place as opposed to people.
That's perfect. And again, I'm not trying to, you know, say that that's the route that we're heading. I just want to make sure that everybody who listens to this and sees this is clear on the direction for Largo PD is to help be a better police department, not to try to, you know...
I agree with you, sir. That is not the intention of the crime analyst position for the Police Department. I mean, you can use it for predictive policing strategies, not just for crime, but for also traffic. So for instance, if you have complaints of drivers passing a stopped school bus at a particular location in time, a crime analyst can help figure out the obvious days and times where that would be happening, and then our traffic division could go forth and take care of that issue, because obviously, we don't want children to be hit by a car or something as they're getting on the school bus. That's just a typical example. So it can be used in many different ways, but the things that you mentioned, that we wouldn't even have the capacity to do that if we wanted to do that, and that's not something that the department wants to do.
Sorry.
Well, maybe we can all go watch Minority Report and talk about that.
Well, that's what they're trying to do in Pasco.
Yeah, I know.
And it's not, well, sorry, that's a whole other discussion.
I think, just to be sensitive of the news stories from Pasco County, it might be worth it to kind of define a little bit more clearly what intelligence-based predictive policing strategies is. Like, what's that look like for our department here, and what does it mean? So just kind of moving forward, understand that when you tell somebody that has been reading the St. Pete Times...
Tampa Bay Times.
That newspaper, they might have their own idea of what predictive policing is, and it's profiling in Pasco County. Here, that's not what we're talking about, so I think it might be a good idea to clearly define what it is for us.
Well, a good example of what we're talking about is, say, on a Saturday or Sunday night in the overnight hours, you have, say, on the west side of the city, you have a bunch of cars that get broken into. And auto burglary is a very common type of crime that happens, usually on weekend overnight hours and almost always when it's raining. I don't know why that is, but it seems to be the case. If you have rain in overnight hours, you're probably going to have cars broken into. And so things like that, a crime analyst can speak to that, and we can get knocked down to the actual times and specific areas that that's happening, maybe even what type of vehicles are being broken into. Is it all high-end cars, or is it lower-end cars? I used to be an auto theft detective at one point in my career, and in the early 2000s, it just seemed like the biggest car to steal was a Toyota Corolla, and it was because one key fit all vehicles. And so people just, the thieves would have a key, then they would go in and steal the car. So that's the type of thing that a crime analyst can help us analyze and identify these perpetrators. So the next goal is, would be to build trust with the community through non-enforcement interactions between officers, youth, and other community members. Merity's already spoken to this regarding the Alice training, but also some of the things that we already do is the Touch a Truck events, our community crime scene seminars and things of that nature. So those things, they have a positive promotion of policing to the community, and that's something that we want to continue and come up with even more innovative ideas to go toward that end. And then the next goal would be to build trust with the community by creating an atmosphere of mutual respect and transparency. One of the tactics there, to increase transparency through the community on policies, calls for service, and information about critical incidents. So what we're talking about there is perhaps using social media platforms like YouTube, Twitter, and Facebook to get immediate information out to the community during critical times or critical incidents.
Okay, and our final initiative in the strategic plan, we're almost there. I know it's getting late, everyone, thank you.
You guys for dinner?
No.
So this last initiative is in regards to responsive police services. The goal is to deliver responsive and effective law enforcement services that address community safety priorities. So again, some of the tactics that we're talking about is being able to evaluate calls for services, caseloads, and other data to determine levels of service. So for instance, we'll be using, say, in the future through a gap analysis, what resources we need to better serve the community. better serve the community.
Okay, so thank you, Earl. So what you've heard was really a lot. And we need to pick a starting place. So with the past several months, the OPB team was working with command staff to figure out the best place to start. Do we want to jump in and do gap analysis and figure out predictive policing and do all of that? Yes. That's more the pinnacle of the strategic plan. First, we got to focus on some other things, like onboarding our crime analysts for starters, understanding our data better. But in terms of where we're going for the first year of this strategic plan, we're focusing on leadership and communication structures and kind of re-engineering that, particularly with other software implementations that are happening in the city like Microsoft and Workday, evaluation of the training program, redevelopment of the recruitment program, focusing on employee health and well-being, particularly with mental health and uniforms. And then, of course, continuing the partnership with the performance and budget team to onboard that crime analyst and really work to inventory data and and get the analysis tools up and running for the department so that we can better access all of that information to help start making decisions and determining what the next best place to go is. So that's really where we're at in terms of the first year of this strategic plan. And then I did want to open it up for questions. The chief said he would come back in. But I also do want to take a quick second to honor those members from the police department that were on the team. We had Lieutenant Amadeo West Caseber, who's an officer just promoted to sergeant, Angie Garcia from the Office of Professional Standards, one of our civilian members, Officer Justin Katz, Lieutenant Kristy LaMonaco, who's also running the mental health program, Bridgette Stevens from Rutgers, Sergeant Mike Boginsky, and then Amber Waters, who of course has recently left the organization but still here with us, helping with Workday remotely. So and then, of course, the OPB team members Will and Brooke, always integral parts of these teams. So I just wanted to thank everyone. And then we're happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions?
You know, I can't get out of this without saying something.
Yes, you can. You can do it.
What I will say is I'm extremely proud of the police department. I see you've made the direct connection between your efforts here and the accreditation status that the police department enjoys. It's been a long road to get here. And I, and not to put you on the spot, Merity, but I have to say that much of it is on your shoulders because there was a time in this city when there wouldn't have been an OPB team up there because it wouldn't have been allowed to happen inside the police department. Often, it felt as if police, the police department was at odds with the city on things like leadership and budget. And, you know, when there was an environment in our city where one department had to give something up in order for another to get something. So those days are long gone. And a lot of that work was done by you. You have built such trust in that organization. And to my peers on this commission, because we continually, you know, beat the drum of supporting our police department. And we do that through the budget process, but within the awards programs and, you know, just in general, supporting the efforts of at least all of our first responders, but in my heart, the police department. So it's incredible to see this because it wouldn't have happened, you know, 10 years ago.
Well, thank you for those kind words. But I really will say it is a team effort. And it's been many years of working with the department, learning about operations, engaging with employees. I think really just sitting and listening is the most important part to engaging with any of our employees, whether it's police department or any department. So it's really something I value and it's something that the OPB team does very well, is listening and engaging with departments on these issues. So thank you for that. And I also have to say, none of this would have been possible if it weren't for the chief being open to having our team come in. I can't, I mean, never have I heard of a police department welcoming in the performance and budget team to come take a look at what's going on that isn't right in the police department. So.
It was always perceived as a threat. But I guess I guess what I'm getting at is I understand how important every member of the team is and was. But the underlying theme through all this is the trust that's developed. I mean, they have faith in the city manager, they have faith in the commission, they have faith in each other. And that's the only way it works. And that's a very important thing to maintain. It's easily lost. Trust is easily lost. But collectively, there's been a lot of work put into building this trust. So great job, all of you guys.
Communication, listening, important words that produce.
And, you know, another, I'm going to say one more thing in along the lines of what Vice Mayor Robinson was talking about, being open and transparent and truthful with the community about what our intents are and what, you know, where our goals are. It just speaks volumes. So.
Yeah, I think that Merity said, talked on it earlier, was, you know, the Largo PD does a lot of fantastic things. And we do a lot of great things. And, you know, earlier this year, when when there was, you know, some of the turmoil that was going on, and a lot of conversations were being had in the community regarding policing and how that works and what's going on. It's still a lot of the conversation that's going on now. But, you know, we were having, I know some of the elected officials had conversations with folks, you know, as far as what they wanted to see from from the Largo PD. And then we go to Largo PD, and they're like, we're there. We're not only there, we're five, six steps ahead of that already. Those are the things that we need, you guys need, not me. You guys need to just let everybody know. I mean, I think it's, I couldn't feel proud of Largo PD for being so far ahead of the national curve and doing the great things and being such a great part of our community. And I just, the only thing I would, my only complaint would be that you guys just need to tell more people, be more open about that. And I think, you know, part of this is to do that. And I can't, you know, I'm excited for it. So great job on all of it. And I know I kind of jumped in there. Sorry.
That's all right. Miss your finger.
Sure. Two things that I'd written down that I really appreciate you going through the entire plan. So thank you. And your explanation of each one. And I enjoyed seeing that passion was defined as a value. Because we just, as just before, that, you know, I had spoken to and said, seeing the passion that was here for homelessness and being out there and sharing that, and and seeing that defined as one of your values is just what we see. We just had a whole, you know, a whole presentation about what's actually happening out there. And I guess true to what Vice Mayor just also said, is wanting to see those success stories. And I'm sure we have to tailor detail a little bit, you know, whatever we have to do. But getting out there that that is that those that passions and being able to relay that to everyone else who doesn't know kind of those behind-the-scenes things that you all are doing, that you do share that passion. And that's, so that was really great to hear. And also, the emphasis on data, which was also kind of tied back into the last presentation as well, is having that data, how much more you'll be able to do with that data, just in general. So I think those are just two great points I picked up throughout your presentation. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for the great work.
Great work. Good job, guys.
Thanks, sir.
Does anybody have any board or committee reports?
I just have a couple of things. Susan Myers did retire on December 4. And Amy Foster is the new CEO for the Homeless Alliance Committee. And then, and I wrote this on a piece of paper, and it's not in here, but the gist of this is Directions for Living is offering a five-hour class on recognizing mental health issues. It's online, and it is free right now for the rest of this month. So if anybody's interested in that, I just wanted to pass that along. That's all I got.
Thank you. Any other Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council? We meet next week. So I'll give you one next month.
PSTA, we had the presentation of the AVA, the Autonomous Vehicle Advantage down in St. Pete a couple weeks ago. If anybody, I believe the FAQ was sent out to the to the commission from Gloria regarding that. But it's autonomous, well, it's essentially. And they're doing some pilot programs down in downtown St. Pete right now. Trying to find it here. There is, it'll be running through, I had it here, oh, here it is, through February 15. It runs from 10:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Wednesday through Sunday. Yeah, Wednesday through Sunday, downtown St. Pete, along Bay Shore Drive, between Fifth Ave North and the Dolly. So basically, between the Vanoy and the Dolly. If you've never been in an autonomous vehicle, you should go take, give it a shot. It's pretty cool. Just literally, there is an operator on there because of state regulations. And in case something happens, I did hear that there, this is the first trial of any autonomous, that type of autonomous vehicle on actual roads. So I think they're doing one in Tampa right now. But it's in a secluded area in Orlando as well. So I think they're, they find out that the scooters that are very popular in downtown St. Pete right now are causing a little bit of issue. I don't think, obviously, anyone has been hurt. There is an operator on the bus. So in case anything does happen, they can, they can take immediate control. And he operated with a literal, it's an Xbox controller, which is kind of fascinating.
Did you ride it?
Absolutely. It was exciting. I mean, it's.
There's two people max right now, right?
Right. So the max right now, it depends on, I think there it's eight. It depends on, like, because of the situation. So I believe four family members can get on at one time. They do have it. I think it's four. They have it, and it's a small bus. It's not, obviously, your regular-sized bus. But it's normal. I think it would be like a 10- or 12-person vehicle. Due to COVID, there's obviously restrictions. But if you're, you're down there with your family, you can, I believe, four people at a time. And it's just a, it's a one salute.
Then they're going to do it in Clearwater next.
They, the plan is to, if if they can get some funding together. So there's some funding they're waiting from Clearwater, as well as, I believe, some federal or state funding to help with the pilot program in Clearwater to move up there after this one in St. Pete.
So naturally, I'm going to ask, what happened to Largo?
Yeah, well.
You want to, you want to test an autonomous vehicle, you ought to put it in Largo instead of down Olmerton Road.
Olmerton, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that one that goes from the new city hall to the park.
Yeah. So.
I know.
If you are so inclined, definitely make a trip down to St. Pete and do it. It's, I thought it was, it was very fascinating to me that you're literally driving in a car or a vehicle with no one controlling it, man, and it's just doing its thing. And then also, I was appointed to the Legislative Committee for the PSTA for this upcoming year. And I was talking to Cheryl Reed earlier, and obviously keep her touch with what's going on from there. And then, do you mind, John, if I talk about the Suncoast League?
Actually, I suggested to Diane that you just change that on the next agendas because you're on board.
Sure, man. I'm glad to take.
It's all you, man.
But, no, I'm just kidding. So Suncoast League of Cities on December 11, which is this coming Friday, there is a virtual meeting hosted by the City of Largo. It was originally intended to be a live meeting, but due to the rising numbers of COVID, we figured it would be best to take that back to a virtual meeting.
We don't have to buy everybody lunch.
That was the main reason, actually. Yeah, we didn't want them. Yeah. So I don't want to get myself in trouble. But, yeah. So the mayor has been, was was very gracious. He will be, you know, introducing the great city of Largo. And then we'll go from there. So that's, again, that's at noon. Everybody, if you haven't received an invite for it yet, there will be one coming.
It's an actual meeting or a holiday luncheon that you bring your own to?
You could do that. I would suggest you do bring it. It's at lunchtime. So, you know, just mute your phone so we don't have to listen to you chewing. That'd be great. I would much appreciate it.
All right. Any other committee reports? All right. Commissioner Carroll?
I have nothing. I've done enough.
All right. Mr. Smith?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
So I do have something. And and it's something that Henry and I have talked about quite a few times over the past couple months. I think Henry is is ready for COVID to be over, mostly because I do a lot of walking now. And and I see a lot of things in Largo that I talked to Henry about. So in all seriousness, though, I want to talk about downtown and the entirety of downtown, from West Bay up Clearwater Largo Road. And, you know, we have, in some aspects, done a great job of, you know, the West Bay, you know, redeveloping that and, you know, the project we just finished along the road there, the Plaza project that we, you know, was almost complete except for some lighting. And then, you know, you move up Clearwater Largo Road, and there's some, really, obviously, some nice redevelopment going on down there. As, you know, you look at the Rosary and some of the projects that are coming. My my concern is, though, that that it seems like it's, we're just, we're lacking a little bit in some of the development and some of the finality of West Bay project, for example. You know, prior to all of the trees on, the oak trees along the sidewalks had grates around them, you know. And then we repoured the sidewalks, and we left chunks, squares around the trees. And apparently, the plan is, there is no plan to put anything in them. So if you, me, in my opinion, and maybe some others here, you walk down West Bay or drive down West Bay and look at where there's an oak tree coming out of the sidewalk, and there's nothing around it except for dirt. It just, and it just looks unfinished. And you can go also on to the landscaping of West Bay along the medians and along the rights-of-way on the side. It's, there's, I believe there is a plan coming, but there originally was no plan to do anything with any of the landscaping, which in my mind is just, it's crazy. So, you know, we, my concern is that there's just, there hasn't been a whole detailed, maybe, plan for all of what we plan on having downtown. So my question is, and again, I've talked to Henry about this a lot, and I believe this is the intention, I would like to, though, maybe get some support from the commission, is to form some sort of maybe committee or or organization. I don't think organization would be the right word, but I think we've tried that before downtown. But some sort of committee, maybe even of staff from all the departments in, you know, economic development, Parks and Rec, who would take care of the landscape, you know, all those different departments, and have them have finalized a plan for what we want downtown. Because I think that's, you know, I think we're lacking that. And I think when you, when you start having projects like any type of redevelopment or, you know, West Bay project, you know, it would have been nice to have that plan in place. So anything that gets done downtown has to meet up with that plan. So I think there's some sort of, obviously, plan right now. But I think we're just, it's either A, not meeting the metrics of that plan, or B, we need to get a little bit more in-depth with that. So I think, you know, the lights downtown, the not, not just the plaza, but the street lights with the Christmas lights not being able to light up. I mean, that, those are just, all that stuff, to me, you know, I'm not, I don't think it's a staff issue by any means. You know, I know that our staff is really, does a fantastic job of, you know, all the projects that we do. But, you know, those things, things like that should not happen on such a regular basis. It seems like downtown in particular to me, for some reason, maybe it's just more in the forefront right now. But those things are just happening all the time. And, you know, I want to see some real movement downtown. And another issue, since I'm on the, I've got the floor, is, you know, prior to doing the West Bay redevelopment or the project down on West Bay Drive, we had pressure wash the sidewalks because it had never been done. In the 20 years prior to, we had never even pressure washed the sidewalks downtown. So we finally were able to get a project together and pressure washed the sidewalks downtown. Now, we've spent many millions of dollars redoing sidewalks in the street and everything down there. And if you walk downtown, and granted, I understand it's the season, there's, you know, hundreds of oak trees down there. But, you know, we just allow that stuff to accumulate, and we don't have any plan to to clean that stuff up. And I think we need to, you know, put more of an investment downtown to show that we are wanting redevelopment downtown. And obviously, $54 million downtown, you know, City Hall project is a pretty, pretty big project. But I think those little things matter too, you know. too, you know, so.
Are you talking, like, like the medians that we have that are, what are they, sponsored by certain businesses, like the medians along West, East Bay?
Yes.
So, would that be something that could be done on the West Bay side?
Well, I think, me, on West Bay, there are some medians on West Bay that are, are sponsored by.
But even like.
But I, so I'm, yeah, I'm.
With some mulch?
I think they'll, so what I'm asking is, is for whatever, however we decide, and, and I'm not going to sit here and, and make that decision, but I think that, whatever, if it's a committee, they have, we have Parks and Rec, we have economic development, we have streets and drainage, we have, you know, the, the departments that are involved in every aspect of what we're doing downtown in particular, and, and define that area and have those, those, that committee discuss and review, and anything that goes on downtown needs to be, you know, brought before or part of that, be a part of that committee, that can, you know.
I mean, there's, there's things that have happened in, in even that project, where we talked about, I don't know how many times we talked about how the crosswalks were shoving people out into the traffic. Well, that was the way they were putting the new ones in.
Uh huh.
Until, until somebody, somebody complained to the right person and got it fixed somewhat.
Uh huh.
And, I, I mean, I agree with you, 15 years ago, the, the medians in downtown and the landscaping along Clearwater Largo Road was meticulously maintained by somebody that took a lot of pride in that, in that landscaping, and it was a, it was a city, it was a city employee or a team of city employees.
Absolutely, yes.
That, that, that did a really, really spectacular job and took a lot of pride in the way that those medians looked. And then, and then, you know, in 08, 09, we contracted out, and, and it, you know, gradually went downhill, and then, then we, we, there's a budgeted item for the maintenance of that landscaping, and I don't know that they've been there, out there more than once this year.
So they, maybe twice now, I've seen them out there, yeah.
Okay.
No, I agree, but I absolutely agree.
So the, the level of attention to the landscape, I mean, I don't know what the budget number was to put that landscaping in originally, 15 or 20 years ago, whenever it was, and I'm talking about Clearwater Largo Road all the way, all the way to as far north as it goes and, and West Bay Drive District, but we put a lot of money there, and, and getting mowed twice a year isn't exactly what, what it needs to be.
Yeah, and I, I think that, you know, 15 years ago, there wasn't a lot of redevelopment downtown, but that was one source that you could look at and say, Largo really is committed to doing something down here, because you could look at the medians, and, and the rights-of-way on, on both West Bay and Clearwater Largo Road, and see that we had put some investment in there, and that has completely gone away.
Especially Clearwater Largo.
Clearwater Largo Road is, is, yes, it, yeah, it's, it's ridiculous. I kind of can see West Bay, because there was obviously a, you know, large construction project along the entirety of that, of that section of the road, so, but, but, you know, knowing that there was nothing planned after the project's done for West Bay is, is frustrating.
I mean, little stuff like, I, I know Commissioner Carroll was, was, I would say, instrumental in getting the streetlights turned back on along Clearwater Largo Road. I think that was a good idea, but, but the pedestrian-scale lights are still there. I mean, we've replaced West Bay Drive lights with pedestrian-scale streetlights, but the ones along Clearwater Largo Road were always only about 12 feet, 13 feet tall, but if you look down, they're all different colors, because, because whoever replaced the bulbs didn't really care, I mean, I'm assuming, didn't really care about the aesthetics, they just, they just wanted to put a bulb back in, because it was out.
Probably did it in the daytime and didn't.
Maybe, and there's some that are out, but, but, I mean, it, it looks haphazard, and, and I, so I agree with you.
And that's, that's the kind of, that small meticulous types thing, those type of things are what I'm specifically talking about, is, you, how come, you know, when, we should be, have somebody, whether it's one of our employees or a contractor, go once a week and blow the sidewalks off downtown, so there's not millions of acorns down there, or.
Well, we can't forget, Vice Mayor, that those decisions were all made.
Correct.
For, in previous, in years gone by, for financial reasons, because I can remember the meetings, where we're going to have to cut staff, and that's, person on that staff did this thing, and that thing doesn't get done anymore.
When we talked about ending the private contract to maintain the medians in downtown, we were presented with how much better our staff can actually maintain.
I know, I get it.
And I'll tell you, that's not been the case.
But maybe that, that's just a refocus thing.
Yeah, and so that's, that's the whole, 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 you know, reason behind this con, my conversation, is, is to refocus our priority of downtown. What is that? What does it look like? Obviously, we want redevelopment downtown, and we've, we've done a lot of work, you know, but I think, you know, some of those small things are just getting overlooked, like light colors, or blowing the sidewalk off, or, or, you know, the medians or the.
Used to have uplighting on the palm trees on.
Absolutely, all that, yeah, all those little things like that.
You know, it stopped working.
And I, and I think that by putting a group together to, to focus on that stuff, I, it will become part of the norm again, is what we're looking for, and I think, I'm not going to speak for everybody on this commission, but I believe it's, it's a priority of everybody on this commission to have a great-looking downtown, especially when we're looking for people to redevelop downtown. We have to be the ones that are showing that we want people down there, and those small things like that really show people that's what we want. We, you know, so.
You want to set some standards, and some of that will come with development orders as, as buildings go up, and, you know, but they will conform to certain standards that you put downtown, right?
Yeah, and, and we've got a, a group of several departments working on this right now. We do, I, I agree with everything that's been said. We need to develop a, a comprehensive maintenance plan for the two areas. We're going to have to budget funds to, to add to the landscaping in both areas. I don't think any of us anticipated that so much of the landscaping was going to be basically destroyed downtown during the road project and, and replacing the sidewalks. So, yeah, and, 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 yeah, I've, I've, I've talked to many of you before about the fact, yeah, that the different color lights on Clearwater Largo Road drive me crazy, too, they need to be replaced. So, yes, so what we, we will do is, we'll develop a plan, and, and probably part of it's going to involve some budget issues for, you know, either, either mid-year or with the new year budget, but, yeah, we'll put together a plan.
That'd be, that'd be great.
Because, because I, I think it's clear what we need to do. Couple updates, just real quick, since, since you brought them up. The downtown with the Christmas decorations that aren't lit, yes, that is an issue with the contractor. For some reason, some of the electrical outlets were not working on the poles. At one point, we identified 15 poles where they're not working. The contractor ordered new parts, and I think they've been, I think they were supposed to be installed this week, so hopefully that's going to fix the problem, so we're working with the contractor. On, on the lighting of the downtown plaza, that has been a, an extremely frustrating issue, where Duke has not been able to provide power. I have engaged the governmental affairs folks with, with Duke. I got an email from them this afternoon that they have engineered the solution during the process of getting permits and getting utility locates, so I'll have some more information, hopefully, in, in, hopefully this week, as to a, a specific timeline for them to get power to that corner. I have no idea why it's been such a major issue. They're actually going to have to bore underneath one of the roadways to get power to the corner, that's, that's what they're going to be doing.
Wasn't there power there already?
No.
Yes, there was, yes.
There's a, there's a, there's a new streetlight that's got power to it.
Yeah.
Would they be embarrassed if we ran out of generator for it? I would. Extension.
I thought about, I thought about a generator, actually, yeah.
Maybe we could get an extension cord off the power pole, yeah.
Run it across the street?
Yeah, the dance studio.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, or we're going to go to the CVA, the drugstore across the street.
That was, that's all I had, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure I was successful in making this run until eight.
All right.
Well done.
Mr. Gerard?
Well, now I'm going to keep it very brief, but I do want to mention that, and this is, this has probably been beaten to death, but COVID rates, positivity rates are increasing drastically. We are now close to 7% positivity, which is twice what we were, over twice what we were in July. This is a real thing. Hospitals are becoming very concerned, and if it keeps going like this, then elective surgeries, elective are going to have to be cut again. Capacity is an issue. I think we have a rolling seven-day average right now of like 300 new cases, and so, you know, so, thank you for wearing masks, I hope everybody understands that it's not a game, you know, and it's not an issue of, it's not an issue of civil rights, it's an issue of caring about other people and obeying the law, because there is a county mask ordinance. And please, 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 everybody, anybody who's listening, and you can write me a letter if you want, wear a mask, observe social distancing, and protect the lives of the people around you, and your own, so, thank you.
Wash your hands.
Wash your hands, yeah, and just use common sense, so, thank you.
Commissioner Holt?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Finger?
I have nothing, thank you.
I got, I got just a couple things. It's not going to be long. There's a parade on the 19th, and as I stated earlier, we're collecting, rather than entry fees for, from the participants, we're collecting food for the Liberty Worship Center's food pantry, which is right where the parade starts in downtown. If you don't want to come to the parade with a bunch of, of cans of food, you can drop them by my office if you'd like, or drop them here even, and, and I'll get them to them. And the other thing is, there's a, there's a sign, or a card in the Commission workroom for one of our state representatives whose birthday is coming up, so if you would like to sign that, please do, and that's all I have. Mr. Schubert?
Just on behalf of staff, thank you for wearing your masks this evening, and thank you for letting us present, do some of our presentations virtually. We'll probably be doing a little more of that, based on, again, how, how the coronavirus progresses, and the comfort and safety level for, of our employees, so, thank you.
Thank you, however, who are these masks from?
Santa Claus.
Santa Claus, thank you, Santa Claus.
Trick question?
They're very nice, they're nice and soft.
They have the wiring.
They were ordered from Amazon.
They're what?
Amazon.
Amazon, very nice, thank you.
Yeah.
Action items.
Okay, I have five things. First is a request by Commissioner Smith that staff follow up with Board Pinellas regarding grant opportunities. A request by Commissioner Gerard for call volume of homeless calls for service. A request by Commissioner Smith that the City Commission be providing copies of the homeless task team report. A request by Commissioner Smith that staff publicize the homeless task teams' work with the homeless on the city's social media accounts. And a request by Vice Mayor Robinson that the homeless task team be back to the City Commission in eight to nine months with an updated report.
Thank you. Anybody, anybody miss anything? All right, meeting's adjourned.